I'd like to call to order the September 6, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18. And then in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Please state your name.
Ellen Brown.
Are you from an organization?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Ellie Roy. No organization.
Thank you. All right, please silence your devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Counselors, Bead and Bender.
Here.
Crocker.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rapgrassetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Stein-Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Thirteen.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) flag of the United States of America and to the Father, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now's the time for public comment. If anyone wishes to speak, please step forward. Make sure you sign in on the clipboard, state your name, and you've got to limit your time to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Northcross from the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. I actually stand before you tonight on two topics. The first would be the issue of cannabis zoning in the town of Barnstable, and the second would be regarding the host community agreement between the town and Vineyard Wind. I have my comments in writing in case I run out of time, but I'll try to touch on the highlights. Regarding the cannabis zoning, I know that we're all struggling to discern what impacts and opportunities the legalization of recreational marijuana brings to our communities. In fact, the Cape Cod Chamber opposed the ballot question two years ago, seeing it as a bad business deal for Massachusetts because we felt that the taxation levels weren't sufficient enough. We believe that since then, the legislature and the Cannabis Control Commission have worked to overcome many of the flaws that were in that ballot question, and we feel that as the Cape communities deliberate whether or not to allow cannabis to become established, cannabis businesses to become established in their towns, we understand the challenges in your decision-making, including the stigma of a once-illegal substance and the lack of hard data from those who are only slightly ahead of the curve on us in establishing these businesses. But two things are for certain: recreational cannabis is now legal, and there are business opportunities that many of our residents are hoping to take advantage of. So I would like to just give you the rest of my comments in writing so you can understand why we support the concept of zoning in the town of Barnstable for that. My second issue is related to a host community agreement between the town and Vineyard Wind, and there's just a couple of reasons that I'd like to highlight for you as well. We think that this project leads us in the right direction for responsibly-sited offshore wind. We have a good partner in Vineyard Wind, and we believe that with this partnership, we will make sure there will never be wind turbines in Nantucket Sound. We think they are as committed as we and the town of Barnstable to supporting that never happened, and we are supporting legislation to that effect. We think that the tax and supplemental payments to the town would ensure substantial local benefit. It's a globally-important project, and we believe that the state analysis shows that we're supporting a project that's going to provide cost-effective, locally-produced energy. So moving this project forward smoothly is important to anchor this industry locally. I can't stress that enough. Students from Cape Cod, many of whom enter into marine trades and vocational programs, could have an opportunity to use their skills locally and have an opportunity to help us grow our blue economy. The company has shown a commitment to environmental protection, especially regarding their substation design. Protecting our water resources is among your most solemn duties, and we feel the safeguards built into Vineyard Wind's design sets the standard. Again, I have a few more comments. I'm just going to leave those with you so you can look at them.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Michelle Scarlett from Centerville. I'm here in support of Vineyard Wind. I am very worried about climate change. Every day, I learn about the problems the changing climate is causing. For example, Phil Kyle's bird report explains how the changing climate is disrupting bird behavior and migration. I hear from the Barnstable entomologist how ticks and their associated diseases are thriving and will continue to benefit from our warming temperature on Cape Cod. The flooding of beachfront homes and businesses and sky-high flood insurance costs are also in the news. Even the Master Gardeners Fall Conference will be discussing climate change and how gardens are responding. We are a coastal community, and our leadership should be doing everything it can to reduce the carbon emissions that contribute to our problems. Reading about these issues is very disturbing because, as an individual, I can only do so much, but as a community, we have the opportunity to support renewable energy. In addition, the host community agreement brings funds that could be used for important environmental improvements, including innovative water protections. I'm afraid we will miss opportunities to grow and expand clean energy because it requires complicated, because it's complicated and requires new partnerships. Vineyard Wind is a win-win for green energy, local well-paying jobs, investment in new technologies, and making long-term plans to protect our economy and environment. I urge the town council to support clean energy and Vineyard Wind.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I could, just one question, one point of clarification, because we ran out of agendas. Will there be a public here, or there won't be 20, we won't be hearing public comment for 2019-15?
No.
So this is it? All right, then yes, I would. Adam Higgins, Marston's Mills. I commend the council for taking the time, you know, to rethink some of the harsher actions from earlier on and presenting what appears to be a consensus with 2019-15. However, I would really caution you in that, as it sits now, that time would be quite wasted. The compromise, as it's written, is basically a ban. The entire industry, small and large, would be put off by a lot of the restrictions here. I've submitted into the record to you for consideration each one of those classifications. And since I left my papers back in my seat, if I could just grab those real quick.
Comes out of you three minutes.
I'm sure it does. I'll try to make up for that. Yeah, so as you see here, we run through the classifications real quick. So, you know, large cultivators wouldn't be interested in the higher price per square foot on Cape Cod without the added value of product manufacturing. So without that component, the larger, you know, operations would see that as unprofitable. So, you know, check them off the list. Small cultivators, you know, those zones are so small, property will be difficult and expensive, if not impossible, to secure. That's unfortunate. One of the most encouraging, you know, stipulations in the amendment is the allowance for craft cooperatives. However, the farms are the backbone of that license type, and there aren't actually any farms in the two proposed zones. So I would, you know, suggest maybe an exception there. Another big one, micro-business. That's the small-business category of license. It's being completely banned. It's a big loss for our friends and neighbors, a lot of them that are sitting out here, the local entrepreneurs, you know, that Wendy spoke of, you know, that she's encouraging from the chamber to support, you know, those folks. They're being completely banned. Research, you know, really, just think about it from a common sense standpoint. Why would a research facility be built in an area where there's so many restrictions, so little innovation, so little business? It just simply wouldn't. Testing, same thing. If the above businesses, you know, don't exist, there will be nothing to test, no market for them to service, you know, so no customers, no demand, you know, it's that simple. So, you know, I would really encourage you to consider, you know, rethinking the restrictions here, you know, but something as simple as allowing micro-business and, you know, maybe an exception for farms, just so they can grow on their existing land, so they can leverage that, you know, the farmland that maybe isn't, you know, as profitable as it once was. Again, you know, with the idea of supporting small business, I hope that you all have already received, you know, ourchange.org petition, you know, when we printed it, had 234 signatures. We've really only been promoting it for a few days, and we've gotten hundreds of signatures. It's up to about 280 right before I checked, and so, you know, these are, if you look at the rolls, there's, you know, maybe 10 percent from all over, but the heart of it is from right here, you know, so there is a big desire to support small business. So I really would implore you to, you know, give the small business, the entrepreneurs, folks that, you know, really can create multi-generational wealth here for all of us, you know, to benefit from here on the Cape. You know, the next Cape Cod ships could be right here, sitting in this room, and they just need a little encouragement. So I just ask, please, you know, foster them, and lastly...
Thirty seconds.
With my last 10 seconds, I will just submit that valuable youth perspective that I think was, you know, submitted electronically by the individual who did it. This was a story I've told in the past and finally got them comfortable to get on the record, so if I could, I would just like to submit that. And, yeah, quite a horror story in there, and I think it shows, you know, why we need a regulated supply. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Elrich, Precinct 2. I rise tonight to express my opposition to the ordinance that's before us as drafted. I think, from so many different perspectives, it does nothing to protect the town from the concerns and the dangers that arise with prohibition and the black market. By permanently banning any retail stores, you obviously avoid the opportunity to reap millions of dollars of potential tax revenue, but again, you do nothing to ameliorate any of the concerns that you've spoken about in the past with reference to fears that you had about marijuana. I'm not going to try to convince anybody tonight. I think it's pretty clear that the majority has made up its mind, and made up its mind a long time ago, and I don't think that decision was based on information. I don't think it was based on the data that you acquired from other states. Unfortunately, I think it was based on personal bias and politics and ideology, and I don't think that's ever a good way to make a decision, and so obviously, I'm disappointed about it. With respect to the ordinance itself, you, I think, have, in a sense, thrown a bone to some other counselors that might have otherwise not supported this ordinance by including testing and research and cultivation, but you've already heard that it's unlikely that those business users are going to be taken advantage of, in light of the fact that the postage-stamp-sized overlay district you have is going to make it nearly impossible for businesses to develop a business model that'll work there. I think, in light of the fact that we've seen so little effort undertaken with respect to the medical marijuana overlay district, should be an indicator to what to expect. Another point I think is important to be made here again, and I've made it in the past, but I think it's important to make it again, there's a, what I would consider a high level of hypocrisy here. This town has worked very hard to develop the alcohol beverage industry. I was advised by one of the planning board members that in the Hyannis Main Street area, there's dozens of licenses, restaurants, as well as other locations where we can purchase alcoholic beverages. And I would also point out that there are two counselors up here who make their living selling alcoholic beverages. How can it be that when we have dozens and dozens of places where we can buy the more dangerous, the more toxic, the more addictive alcoholic beverages, you can't figure out a way in your hearts to decide that one store that sells retail marijuana is unacceptable? It doesn't make sense. It's not supported by the logic, and it's, again, extremely disappointing. And finally, I do want to focus on the counselors that represent the precincts where the yes-on-four question, where the legalization question passed. There are six counselors: Counselor Hebert, Dagwan, Tinsley, Levek, Schnep, Cullum. In all of your precincts, the voters expressed their opinion, in some cases, very strongly
Thirty seconds.
About how they wanted legalization to end. And you will be slapping them in the faces. It's, you know, there's enough cynicism out there, and so when voters vote for something and the elected officials reject out of hand without any good basis, at least Counselor Flores is relying on the vote of his district to do what he's going to do in voting for this weakened ordinance, but the rest of you, I hope, will reconsider and vote the way your counselors have asked you to vote. They did it for good reasons. They didn't vote that way for a testing facility, I can tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Ellen Taylor-Brown.
Can you please sign in?
My name is Ellen Taylor-Brown. I am a United States Air Force veteran. I am a Barnstable resident. I live in Catuah, Massachusetts, and I would be considered a washashore. I moved here when I was 12 years old. I went to middle school here. I went to high school here. I left and I went off to the United States Air Force, and I came back to good old Cape Cod. And then I graduated from Cape Cod Community College. I am invested in living here. I care about this community. I care about seeing us grow, seeing us proper, seeing us benefit, and doing what's beneficial for this town and its residents. And I would definitely be looking into getting a micro-business here on Cape Cod. I would love to be a business owner here on Cape Cod and live where all my friends are, where all my family is. My family's in Centerville. My family's in Catuah. I want to live where my friends and my family are. If you ban micro-businesses, you ban me. I'm who you're banning. I'm what you're banning. Look, no, look, hi, I'm what you're banning. I'm not a bad person. I don't have malicious intent. I want to start a business, and I want to have it grow, and I want to give back to our community. That's what people want to do, give back to our community. So you're going to ban the micro-businesses and the recreational licenses. We need recreational brick-and-mortar dispensaries here. We need people to be able to access their cognitive liberties, and if they want the choice to go and purchase some cannabis and use that to relax, then they should be able to do that in the safety of their home with personal choice and personal responsibility, and you would be denying them that. And you'd also be shutting out this multimillion-dollar industry. We're here on Cape Cod. We're very much a seasonal place where a lot of us make our revenue in the summertime, and then we live off that through the year. Wouldn't it be great if we had a year-round sustainable business where it's, there are low entries to, low barriers to entry, where we could have everybody participate, where you could start, if you're someone like me who's 30 years old, or maybe you're looking to get into a new career, cannabis could be that multimillion-dollar career. That could be your new, fresh start. And I just wanted to also add that the zoning is very, very small. It's very small. As I said, I live in Catuah. There's nothing in Catuah. All the way over here, this teeny-tiny, I was like, is what? It's going, oh, it's right there. It's so small, you have to really search to find it. That's not fair to do to the entrepreneurs and the small businesses that want to grow and thrive here. Please think about that when you think about this ban. Please do not ban micro-businesses, recreational businesses, and think about the small guy, the little guy who wants to be a part of this, because if you ban these businesses, I have to move. I have to move. I don't want to move. I'm going to have to leave to pursue my dream, to be in the cannabis industry, and to continue to be an entrepreneur. So please don't take that away from me, and please don't take it away from the other entrepreneurs. I really thank you for your time, and I really wanted to say thank you so much, Mr. Tinsley, because I heard that this second-last hearing was a big part of your doing. So just thank you so much for your time, and please consider that. Please consider the entrepreneurs.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jan Kubiak.
Make sure you sign in, please.
And I'm here to support Vineyard Wind. I've gotten to know them over these past few months and have been impressed by several things that I just want to mention that show me that they're very responsible, and to me, they are another renewable energy that has a real sustainability goal, and I think that's what drives them. And part of that was knowing how all of the discussions that they had with other environmental organizations to, so that they could express their concerns and make their adjustments to what they were saying, and that they also, I was impressed that they scanned the Lewis Bay floor to a depth of 20 feet where the cable has been a big issue. And to me, this was a sandy bottom. They went down 20 feet. They've determined that this is the path that would be the best for them, and apart from it being the shortest, it just makes sense to me that this is also the one that environmentally makes the most sense as well. And, oh, and it's just been great access to them. I, you know, if you have questions, you know, I'm sure that you can have access to really fantastic answers that they are well-thought-out. And then, apart from that, in the past few weeks, I happened to be a member of an organization that I shared with this, this Dr. Masri, who had, he has taken a, an unpaid sabbatical. He teaches out at University of California in Irvine, but he was trained in Harvard, and this year, he decided to just leave for a year and tour with his partner around 35 states of the United States, and he is just talking, he has a book, he's talking about the 50 misconceptions of climate change, and it's a fabulous book. I just started reading it on Kindle, and it's just so, it just makes it so simple and tells you, I've been following this, it feels like, all my life, and he tells a lot of things that I didn't know. So anyway, I want to tell you, tomorrow and Saturday, he's going to be on the Cape with Athena Simularis, and, you know, I urge you, if you can catch him, I think it's going to be a very worthwhile thing. He brings, just the nature of him doing this brings the sense of urgency about climate change, and he was just very thoughtful. I'm going to leave you a couple of, I gave out most of these.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Gagne. I'm a resident of West Barnstable, proud father of a seven-year-old daughter. I grew up at Marston's Mills, and I work for an organization called Cannabis Community Care and Research Network. I would like to start out by thanking all of you for your dedication to this issue, for the time each and every one of you have put in educating yourselves on the issue to business owners and constituents, listening to everyone. Thank you so much. Like I said before, we do this work a lot around the state, and not everyone has been as receptive as all of you. So thank you very much, whether you are pro or con. It's been a pleasure doing this process. This is the first political process I've ever gone through, and would like to point out, Matt, I really have appreciated working with you. It's been a pleasure. The cannabis industry is new to Massachusetts. It's a new-to-Massachusetts employment sector that has a number of entry-level positions which require some skill training in addition to basic job readiness skills. The Cannabis Control Commission has prioritized social equity in the adult-use cannabis industry and is launching a first-of-its-kind social equity training program. Our organization has been working with Holyoke, Massachusetts, for, over the past year. Since we've started working with them, the unemployment rate has dipped down, the opioid death rate has dropped, and since then, it has been such a success in the city of Holyoke that the Holyoke Community College has recently reached out to Cannabis Community Care and Research Network, and we are now working on a two-year workforce training program. A two-year workforce training program that will be put in place with accreditation from the state of Massachusetts that could be put in place here at Cape Cod Community College. Do you know what that could do for this community? How impactful a workforce training program for a $1.4 billion industry to be put in place into the town of Barnstable? It's, I got goosebumps talking about it right now. Like, we have an opportunity right now to actually make a change in this community. How many times are we going to sit here and get Facebook messages about, let's do a drink social so we can talk about the future of how, what could change Cape Cod? We have that. It is in this room right now. It's me, it's Spencer, it's Kelly, it's Ellen, it's all of us. We're here. We are the industry, and we are here in your backyard, and we have the ability to really work with you, work with this town, to work with youth prevention programs, talk to parents. I want to talk to friends right now. I'm a dad. Like, I go and like, it's kind of been a behind, you know, ooh, he's the weed dad. It is what it is, but I also, like, I'm a very successful, I'm working for one of the most successful cannabis industry businesses right now because we're not just the weed dads or the weed parents. We're weed innovators. We're cannabis innovators, and we're bringing this to the forefront, and we're bringing, we're able to have discussions with other parents who use cannabis.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. So, that being said, the town of Barnstable actually, holy, the town of Barnstable, I believe, it's one of 31 or 32, the town of Barnstable is eligible as one of the economic development gateway cities. That means that the town of Barnstable is eligible for grants for workforce training to put people back to work, and if you're about to put a lot of, there's people that need to get back to work. We have the opportunity to put people back to work, so please consider bringing the full industry in, being passionate about it, and let's all work together, because we have a lot of smart people sitting in this room, and we all want to work together, all of us. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch soon.
Thank you. Notice that there's an individual recording. Could you please step forward and give your name, please? Ma'am? Could you please come forward and state your name?
Jessica Edwards.
Are you with the organization?
Not speaking here tonight.
Okay, thank you. I just want, you were recording, so I have to, you have to identify yourself.
I'm friends with Chris, so I just wanted to capture that.
Okay, that's fine. Just need to identify yourself. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Good evening. I'm Sue Rorback, and I live in Centerville. I'm here to talk to you about Cape Wind, Cape Wind, and Cape Wind, and Vineyard Wind. And what I wanted to say about Cape Wind is that I was opposed to Cape Wind. Most of you, if not all of you, were opposed to Cape Wind, and the town of Barnstable and the town council was really instrumental in stopping Cape Wind. This is very different. Vineyard Wind is very different. It's a good project, and there's been a good process. In response to people's concerns about the lack of process for Cape Wind, the federal government established a process for siting of wind projects. The state established a process that brought good pricing, and now Barnstable has an opportunity to enter into a partnership that will benefit residents as well as state energy needs. It's a win-win. We have, Cape Wind was a bad project. Now we have a good project that we can support, and I really, really hope that you will do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Spencer Knowles for Regulate Cape Cod, and I always do my best never to be redundant, never to repeat myself, so I'm not going to waste anyone's time tonight. These are not my remarks, don't worry. The remarks that I want to say have already been said. They've been said through weeks and months of deliberation and conversation, through phone calls, through emails, through education, which two of these counselors here were educated on the regulated marketplace. So what do we have left to do? Well, our hope, and our ask respectfully, is that you use the moratorium that you currently are in, which ends at the end of this year, that you go back to the drawing board, because what I found, my biggest takeaway, and I think our biggest takeaway at our last meeting, and I learned something every meeting I come to, so I appreciate that, is that this body is agile, I believe the word was. Nimble, I think, was also used. So agility, the ability to be nimble, the ability to read in twice to take up something, which... something, which I would love to see and I hope that's true, but I also would challenge and encourage this body to be nimble and agile, to go back to the drawing board, to not vote on this tonight, to include micro businesses, to include special permitting for craft cooperatives, to revisit a moratorium, at the very least on retail, and do this thoroughly. Because if this body truly is agile and nimble, there's plenty of time between now and the end of December to come back with a much better, more thoughtful piece of legislation. Thank you very much for all your patience and time with our group over these past many months.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's too bad we couldn't split this into the.
Got to make sure the green light's on your microphone there. Is it on? Maybe tilt it up a little bit.
Yep. I'm just saying it's too bad that we don't have the marijuana people and the Vineyard Wind people separated here, but I'm here, I'm here to support the Vineyard Wind negotiations that are going on in the host agreement.
Sorry, did you state your name?
My name's Gordon Starr. I think it's a, we need this renewable energy. I'm not sure if that's an issue with everybody, but I think we should put our support with the town manager and the legal department, and I'm sure that they will come up with an agreement that protects our water and protects everything else that's going to come up in the process. I think the Vineyard Wind is, it's a responsible and needed project and I just support it and hope that you support the community agreement, the host agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is there a sign-in?
Yep.
My name is Erin Peterson. I'm from.
Please pull the microphone down a little bit.
My name's Erin Peterson. I'm a resident of Marston's Mills. My husband is a business owner. I'm a wellness professional. We're parents of a four-year-old daughter. We're involved and dedicated to our local community, so I wanted to put myself out there and share my thoughts on what is essentially a ban. You know, it's crucial that our community reap the benefits of the $1.8 billion cannabis industry. You know, after looking at the tax revenue in states that regulate marijuana and the ability to impose a 6% tax, we can't deny the potential. The socioeconomic gap in Barnstable is growing. Between the housing crisis, job disparity, and seasonality of the Cape, it's difficult for people to move forward. You know, this ban is damaging and I believe it will prevent the opportunity for young professionals, skilled tradesmen, and local innovators to pursue gainful employment that the cannabis industry offers. This will result in more families leaving the Cape, an aging Cape, a Cape that needs the next generation to be there to care for them. So that's how I feel on a community level. On a personal level, I, I want to share that when I was 23 years old, I was struck head-on by a drunk driver. I almost lost my leg. Luckily, I learned to walk again after being in a wheelchair. Couple of years later, my little sister, mother of three, was killed by a drunk driver. Now, the reason I bring this up, the common denominator between these two gentlemen was the fact that they were addicted to heroin. And after I've read the research and seen the strides being made with cannabis and medicine, I wonder if these men, these young men struggling, you know, without jobs and using these drugs to pacify their feelings, if they had had the resources, access to cannabis, you know, and how many lives, how many, many lives would have been completely different? So I'm here to say, to say to you as a mom and as someone who wants to stay on Cape and raise my family, I support small cannabis business in Barnstable. I support smart and safe zoning and a regulated commerce system. I support small cultivators and craft cooperatives, and this is a real opportunity here. And I'd like to have faith that my town, the people that represent us, will act in our best interest and remain forward-thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Brianne Motill. I apologize for being a little unprepared. I wasn't going to speak, but I feel like there's something that's missing here and I want to share it. Everyone is talking about the economy and the opportunity and the financial aspects, which of course I agree with, they're astounding and they can make a profound difference in our community, but from my experience, I'm, I'm new to all of this. And the reason that I've come here, I'm in health and wellness and I'm a personal trainer and I have many, many, many elderly clients that have started using cannabis in a variety of, variety of methods and they're, they have made amazing progress. They have, it's not a, of course, it's already approved, so it's not necessarily that I'm seeking the approval, but these are 79-year-old clients that go to the barnacle for lunch that are now buying things on the black market and they should be able to go to a local retail store and be able to find a product that is helping them. So that's how, what motivated me to bring me here was seeing how many people have really improved their quality of life and, you know, instead of going to the catuit market, they can also go to the store next door and get whatever they need to get instead of having to try to go off Cape or having to find it another way. So not only are we helping the economy, but there's also the customer that's benefiting and they're, it's, it's been, it's been amazing watching these people really, really, really improve and really get that quality of life so we can allow them to find their method within our community. It just creates a full circle. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Adam Hanson, precinct three. Please bear with me. All right, this vote is either going to be about creating a positive opportunity for our town or preventing the potential to be a part of a billion-dollar industry. We should open this town up to the industry. The regulations and guidelines are already given to us from the state. Open zoning up to areas as written in state regulations. The current zoning regulation in this vote would be detrimental to an emerging industry, especially when you consider micro businesses and craft cooperatives. This will directly affect any and all Barnstable residents from becoming small business owners and a part of the potential billion-dollar industry. The town should at least add in an amendment to allow micro business and craft cooperatives and free up the zoning regulations. The town should never be in a position to directly affect the financial stake of its citizens by shutting out their ability to start a small business. Please allow this golden opportunity to happen in Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening and thank you for all your work thus far to understand this issue and talk about it and.
State your name.
And review the regulations. My name is Beth Waterfall and I'm the executive director of Elevate Northeast, which is a nonprofit dedicated to educating a diverse workforce for the cannabis industry across the Northeast. Picture the headlines, guys. Scientists discover Amazonian plant that helps people live happier, healthy lives, reduces drug and alcohol use and dependence, reduces cigarette dependence, and has several medicinal applications such as anti-inflammation, anti-pain, anti-anxiety, anti-anxiety, and more. I imagine you'd all be quite interested in how soon you could access it for yourself and your family. The good news is that you don't have to imagine or wait for such a discovery because it's already here and has been here for millennia, and now we can plan responsibly for its presence in Barnstable. The bad news is that due to a deliberate and very effective public relations campaign that started in the 1930s, we're here tonight actually talking about banning any businesses, farmers, scientists, and other entrepreneurs that want to bring this plant to the majority of Americans who know that cannabis is not the harmful substance that ignorant, yet powerful, well-funded prohibitionists still maliciously maintain that it is. We were all fooled, all fooled by the powerful men who made cannabis illegal. That's why a slim majority of Barnstable voters voted no to question four in 2016, but I guarantee they know better now. A lot has happened since then, and I would wager anything to prove that if the same voters had the chance to vote again today on question four, knowing what they know now, seeing the Cannabis Control Commission, and nearly 54% of the people in Massachusetts voted back then too, to approve it, it would pass by even more of a majority today. I, I just, I just know it. And I can say this because two months ago, I attended a Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce event about cannabis business. And days before the event, Wendy Northcross of the chamber announced that due to overwhelming demand, the event actually had to move to a ballroom at the Cape Codder because there were so many local businesses that wanted to learn and wanted to perhaps expand what they were doing, whether they were involved in the alcohol industry, hospitality, there was a woman in hospice, there's so much opportunity and so much appetite for it. The interest in this industry has absolutely exploded and, but so now, instead of banning this very viable and economy-boosting industry, I ask you to not make a decision based on fear or how your elderly constituency may have felt two years ago. Instead, embrace this opportunity to shape Barnstable's future by not only welcoming licensed cannabis businesses into Barnstable, but by showing that you are the leaders who make decisions based on facts and science instead of fear, but also allow these businesses to operate in business zones appropriate to their business type. Your support of business licensing in Barnstable tonight also shows your support for Cape farmers, small business owners and families who want to have jobs in what will be a multi-billion-dollar industry in just a matter of months. Should you vote to ban these, these businesses, you are showing your community and constituency that you instead support the illicit drug market, which doesn't ask for IDs and will very generously throw in some fentanyl and maybe some molly too. Barnstable is the tourism hub of Cape Cod. Non-resident taxpayers, combined with the support of tourists, they want cannabis in Barnstable. I know this because there's a very healthy illicit market here.
Thirty seconds.
Bans support the illicit market. Bans on licensed businesses are foolish, irresponsible, and painfully short-sighted. The Massachusetts showed its desire for progressive leadership just earlier this week, right? So please be on the right side of history and show your reality-based decision-making skills by creating space for these businesses in Barnstable. It really is this simple. Do you want to fuel an illicit market or do you want to create jobs and space for innovation? You have three months to figure it out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, no closed public comment. Any council response to public comment? Council Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. To suggest that we don't know what we're doing, to suggest that we don't take into consideration all the aspects, so tonight, I was going to vote yes, but I'm thinking of voting no because, but, what's going to happen is, there's no guarantee that we'll take it up again. We're opening up the door in a thoughtful methodology of research, of learning, of opportunity, to be bigger and better than anybody ever dreamed of in this town, but the attitude in the presentation that we don't know what we're doing is offensive. We voted by 1,000 people no in the town of Barnstable. My precinct does not run the town. I, I took my oath of office to serve all of the town. So right now, the town of Barnstable voted no. The state said that we could revisit this and we could make a difference. My precinct, precinct three, is the high school, the middle school, the intermediate school, and, and the elementary school. It is very clear that you don't have pot shops in a precinct that is loaded with schools. Our school committee has literally begged us to vote no. To be offensive to them and not give credence to careful study, research, and understanding is an insult to the students and to the parents of this town. We have responsibilities and we're going to continue to serve those responsibilities. To think that this is the biggest thing on my mind, I, I would have to say to you, cancer, water, the quality of water. When a 14-year-old girl on her birthday is told that she has cancer, I'm offended by that when we don't put as much energy into finding out what might have caused this cancer in a young life and everybody knows somebody who's being told today or tomorrow that there's cancer in their family. We have to look at those things. That's important to me. I go to bed thinking about the quality of our water and what we're going to do about our wastewater, and I wake up every morning doing the same thing. So to suggest that I am less than concentrating on my job to be a counselor in this community is offensive to me. I'm not afraid of not being re-elected. I'm doing what's the right thing by my conscience. My understanding is that by our passing this piece of legislation is that we're opening the door for research. If we don't do anything, then nothing's going to happen and, and that's not what we want to do. We want to be cooperative, we want to work together, but this, this is, I cannot believe the energy that, that's going into this. I'm a small businessman. You want to worry about problems, worry about the housing and the cost of housing. I had a young employee said to me today, because I'm closing my little business, they said, well, that's okay because we're thinking moving off Cape, we're going to go back to Four River or to New Bedford because we can't live on Cape Cod. So that's the crisis and we're all aware of it and we're trying to make inroads here. So I, I, I'm sorry that everybody can't agree on this, but I think we're doing our very best. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We're going to move on into town manager communications, please. Town manager Mark Els.
Good evening. Mark Els, town manager. Before I start, I, I wanted to say thank you to our council and all our residents and our visitors and especially our staff. We just concluded another summer season. It was extremely busy, you know, certainly seeing numbers of visitors and, and use of our facilities by our visitors and residents near record levels, and we did it safely. I think we did it in an environment that, that we, we had fewer complaints, more compliments, worked well with our public, and so I just wanted to say thank you. It was, it was a positive season and it's nice when that happens. Let's hope for sun next summer. Everybody will be just as busy. This is my report for the period of August 16th through September 6th. We're proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY 2020 is scheduled. Mark Milne, Finance Director, will provide an FY 2020 preliminary budget planning overview later this evening. Town Council Strategic Plan Workshop is scheduled for September 15th, and a joint meeting workshop with the School Committee to review the financial condition of the town is planned for October 4th. On August 29th, 2019, Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito met with members of the Cape delegation, Dan Knappich, Yarmouth Town Administrator, and I, to discuss how the Baker-Polito administration is serving our communities. We discussed the effectiveness of ongoing state programs, opportunities to improve programs, and upcoming initiatives. Governor Baker and Lieutenant Polito take time to understand our needs, they're accessible to us at all times, and they provide municipalities with real assistance beyond any administration I've had the privilege of working with. Later that afternoon, we attended an announcement by the Lieutenant Governor, and I've attached that announcement, that the town of Barnstable, 2018 navigational dredge pilot program grant application in the amount of $1 million had been approved. The details of the project to which the grant will be used will be discussed later this evening in an agenda item. The Baker-Polito administration is committed to supporting municipalities and their infrastructure and their understanding of coastal resilience, has moved Cape Cod forward toward a sustainable future, and greatly assisted the town of Barnstable in a needed infrastructure project that supports our environment. that supports our environment, recreational use, and the economy. I also want to thank the Cape delegation for their support and the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, who provided the financial match, which was actually over a million dollars, in permitting for the project. This was a fifty-fifty grant. So the permitting that they did to get this project dredge-ready allowed us to apply, and the only communities that got these grants were the communities that had their permits and are ready to go. And Dan Santos provided me a little bit of a schedule, but on September tenth, Natural Resources is conducting shellfish surveys. September twentieth, anticipated date of issuing an invitation for bids for dewatering, notifying other agencies. We progress into October with commencing the work. We're going to be using the county dredge here on this particular project. So we'll begin the permitted work by mid-October, and we will work through this until January fifteenth, which our permit allows. So positive story. The other impressive thing about this was, I believe, the administration identified monies that they had within their existing budget, made those monies available for a grant program, issued the grant applications. We applied, and less than two months later, we received the grant. And so did other communities. This wasn't just the town of Barnstable. So that's a positive story for all. We continue working with the Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife, USGS, Department of Environmental Protection, Water Supply, staff regarding the future potential water supply wells proposed for the two hundred and fifty-acre parcel northeast of the Hyannis Water System. USGS has completed preliminary modeling runs, seven of them, in the area of the Hyannis Ponds Complex. Fish and Wildlife and USGFGS have established an internal review schedule that's to be completed by tomorrow. Water sampling has been completed in the test wells, in all the wells with all the samples at this point, perchlorate, PFOS, dioxin, heavy oil contamination. Results were either no detector below standards. Ion and manganese levels in the wells were high and will require us to treat that. That is typical on Cape Cod. Those are not, those are more aesthetic-type metals that you might find in our groundwater and in our ground here. So those are absolutely manageable. We expect to reconvene a full group later this month. They said they'd get back to us next week on a specific date to review the modeling and the quality results, and we'll keep you advised as we progress on this matter. This is especially important to us because there have been, and I don't have final information certainly, but I know that the Department of Environmental Protection is contemplating dropping the standards relevant to PFOS further. So we really, and these contaminants are everywhere. So this is something that we need to watch very closely. It will impact our water supplies on Cape Cod, and it will impact our water supplies in Barnstable. So we need to watch this very closely, and we are. And we'll continue to advise you as we obtain more information relevant to what direction they're going in. We continue to, we continue our discussions with Vineyard Wind relative to their proposal to construct transmission facilities, and they're interconnect with the proposed offshore wind farm in federal waters. As I understand the process, there are several efforts proceeding concurrently, and later this evening during the resolve for you to authorize the Town Manager Joe enter into a host-community agreement, I have a little outline to better frame the discussions that we've had. But there are several processes moving forward at the same time, some involving public hearings, some not. We have the Energy Facility Siting Board process that does have public hearings. I've given you a link further down in this memo, and I plan to establish a website, not with us providing, certainly us providing information such as the link that Vineyard Wind creates, so that our residents, they'll ask, "Well, where can I find this information?" So I want to be able to say, "Just go to our website." I'm not going to have a website. They have a website. We're going to give them a link to their website. Because many, many people call me and say, I've had people from Yarmouth calling me, the state calling me, residents calling me, asking me specific questions about a project that we're not the proponent of. We are listening, and they can make their decisions as they move through this process, and we can certainly weigh in on that at appropriate times, but I can't tell you specifically where this project will end. It's subject to the proponent. It's subject to the review process, and so this is evolving as we move through it. But beyond the EFSP, there's a MIPA process, again, public comment opportunities associated with that. Both the EFSP and MIPA, we have submitted our concerns and comments. If you want to see what we've submitted, I will. I think I have forwarded the MIPA comments to our council, but I can certainly share any and all as appropriate with you. We're also discussing, and I've been giving you regular updates, on a host-community agreement, and I'll hold my review of that until later on your agenda. There also may be an Article ninety-seven land deposition request to go to Concom and the council. That isn't confirmed. That's under review, and we can certainly talk about that later as well. I've attached the link to the Vineyard Wind presentation from the Energy Facility Siting Board that took place in April of two thousand and eighteen. It contains information on the project background and overview and specifics on the proposed work, including potential landing sites through, potential landing sites, the roadways that the various routes may follow, and the locations of the substations. I met with Vineyard Wind as recently as this morning. They actually were here all day long with us and met first with me and then with legal staff to continue discussions on development of the community agreement, of easements, and in general of the processes that I've just described. So we are working collegially together as we move through the review of this process. I also met with the town of Yarmouth, and the Town Administrator and I are in regular communications as this project progresses. We expect to move to a final draft host-community agreement, and therefore, we've brought the resolve that you will have before you later this evening, and I'll keep you advised as we progress on this matter. The Dog Park Project continues to progress with a planned completion date of October of this year. We are planning for an opening later this fall. We are not planning to offer programming for dogs at that location. So basically, this is going to be a facility you take your dog to. It's not a manned facility by the town of Barnstable offering programming. It is a facility that enforcement issues will be the responsible of our Department of Environmental Affairs, Marine Environmental Affairs, under our Animal Control Officer. So that's, when an issue comes up, that's who will report to the site. The Department of Public Works will manage the maintenance of the facility. We're going to put out proper signs. We'll also coordinate with the volunteer groups, who have been critical to this progressing and have actually put forward some funding to assist us in the early stages of design of this project. So we'll keep you advised on a specific date when that will open, and we'll be developing budgets for next year. We'll be looking to the volunteers to assist. There were assumptions that volunteers would run this and regulate it, but truly, they have no authority to do either of those. That's not the recommendation of your Town Manager, and I don't believe it's something that they have the authority to do. So we will be running it. They will be assisting us, and any changes to regulations, certainly, we'll go through a public hearing process. There's no fees anticipated at this point, but we'll keep you advised as we progress through it. No fees unless they get penalized for bad behavior. So we're probably going to ask people to pick up their own dog. We'll give the bags, but they're going to have to clean up after their dog and put it somewhere. That might be one of the bigger issues besides interactions here, so we'll have to see how this goes. Sometimes I walk my beaches, and I wonder how things happen the way that they do. So we hope that doesn't happen at the Dog Park. On Saturday, September twenty-second, the Harwich Town Manager will pass the handle for the Tenth Annual Big Fix, a community service event devoted to helping low-income homeowners on Cape Cod. He'll pass the handle to the Town Manager of Barnstable. That's me. The Big Fix is an annual event that supports the impactful work of the Housing Assisting Corporation in three ways: raising much-needed funds to enrich and enhance our existing services, providing invaluable assistance to veterans, seniors, and disabled homeowners with cleanup landscaping, small home repair projects, and offering a meaningful and hands-on experience for volunteers on the day of the event. I've attached the two thousand and nineteen Big Fix overview. This isn't the first time Barnstable's participated, but we're happy to participate once again, and I'll provide you additional information as it becomes available. At a prior Town Council meeting, residents of Commerce Road and Merrisman Creek area expressed concerns regarding flooding in their neighborhood. In coordination with Councilor John Flores, we have scheduled a public meeting at the Harborview Room in the Barnstable County Complex on Wednesday, September twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven PM to meet the residents. We plan to discuss our plans for action to address residents' concerns about future flooding events. We've also invited the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, the Director of Public Works, the Head of Marine and Environmental Affairs, our Harbor Master, and any and all others that we may think of. John will lead. I'll follow, and then we'll get into the technical details. We'll try to listen to our residents. We're going to try to be responsive. I know I shared with you some of the challenges we have out there at the last Town Council meeting, but we're going to work with our residents to do all that we can to help them protect certainly their homes and for us to protect our assets there as well. I was informed by the family of Ann Williams, that, I think most of us or all of us know Ann, that she will be unable to continue in her role as one of our two Barnstable representatives on the Cape Cod Technical High School School Board. Ms. Williams' many years of service will be greatly missed. Ann's played many roles in our community, and her daughter had called me to inform me of this. I've offered the position to Paul Hebert, and Mr. Hebert has accepted through the end of Ms. Williams' term on the board. It's a little under two years. Paul had participated when the prior vacancy came available. We actually only had two applicants at that point. He was one of them. He gracious, and they were both, you know, very qualified individuals. Paul graciously allowed the other candidate, but asked if another opening occurred, if he could participate. So I've asked Paul to do that. He's accepted. So thank you very, and this is a Town Manager-appointed position. So thank you very much for doing that. And I plan to go to the Cape Tech meeting, if Ann attends, to personally thank her, and I'll probably bring something else forward in thanks for her many years of service. On August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, I met with the Board of Health to provide a comprehensive water management plan update. I am scheduled to return to the Board of Health on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, at three PM to further discuss relevant issues. I wish to provide the Town Council with the same update. I had done this following the last time I was at the Board of Health, so I'd like to take this opportunity just to run through that information with you. It's a good update of what DBW and our staff is doing, and it also brings an issue forward to the Board of Health specifically to contemplate change to an interim regulation. So I was before the Board of Health on December nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and then before the council with a similar update, such as I'm doing tonight for you. On February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, we discussed the challenges we have in managing our water resources while balancing economic growth and providing housing for all in Barnstable, discussed the traditional and non-traditional methods to manage our water resources, updated the Board of Health on our comprehensive water management plan, discussed the implementation of sewer expansion projects, which Town Council approved the sewer design funds for, for three of those expansion projects last fiscal year, well, this current fiscal year, but last budget approval process. Requested that the Board of Health evaluate Chapter three sixty, onsite sewage disposal systems, the interim regulation that they have in place relevant to their saltwater estuary section. It was adopted back in two thousand and eight, and there's more current information available to consider relative to that regulation. Basically, I went back in on August twenty-ninth. I gave the Board of Health a similar update with the added information, and then specifically requested that they either eliminate or modify this specific regulation because there's more information available. We have active projects going in much of the area where they adopted this interim reg. The interim reg was limited only to sewer expansion, when we now have both traditional and non-traditional options open to us, and I believe a decade later, it merits consideration of review where it was an interim regulation at the time of adoption. This is more of a general education. I know you're all familiar with this, but we have five major embayments in the town of Barnstable on the north side, Barnstable Harbor. That is the one that doesn't exceed its nutrient loading capacity. I think we, it's just as critical as the other four. I just think we're going to be able to take a different preventative approach there as opposed to responding to the challenges that we have along the south side. We start with Pompaness at Bay, a small portion of Barnstable, majority in Mashpee, some in Sandwich, three bays, a majority in Barnstable, a little bit Mashpee, and a fair-sized piece in Sandwich, Centerville River, East Bay, which is solely in Barnstable, and then Lewis Bay, which is shared with the town of Yarmouth. In, I'll come back to what I was going to say next. I also threw these coastal recharge areas over our whole town and showed you where our water supply is, and showed you where our treatment plants are, and showed you where our landfill is. This becomes a very complicated challenge to manage our water resources in our community. The Tan area is where our public water supply comes from. When you take out the Great Marsh, more than half of our town is water supply. So everything we do on the ground that we stand on, at least half the time, can impact what we're, you know, what's going on in our public water supply. We've got our treatment plant in Hyannis. We've got a communal system in Centerville. We've got a small-packaged treatment plant in the Mills, and then we've got a capped landfill in the Mills as well. We've done an evaluation, working, our Public Works Department did an excellent job in leading the evaluation, working with the Water Resources Committee that the Town Council created, came out with recommendations for where we need to remove nitrogen, identified where other issues like economic development may occur, where we have ponds and well, and public water supply well-protection areas, where we might need an intermunicipal, or where we have an intermunicipal agreement to address problems, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the different color coding we have here. As a result of that, last fiscal year, we came forward with a request for design money in four areas, one internal to the existing system to improve capacity issues. That was on Ridgewood Ave all the way down to South Street. But new expansion included attics and cell side of one thirty-two on the northeast side of Will Quocket Lake. Basically, everything to the west of Finney's Lane that is in sewer, up to the lake, we received numerous, in addition to knowing that this fell within the area that I just identified to you, numerous complaints from residents in this area this year about high groundwater and flooding, and many comments from sewer installers to say, "Well, it's nice that they're calling us to replace their septic system, but, you know, these flood, and we've known this for decades, town, what are you going to do about it?" So between it having been identified and certainly these most recent high groundwater conditions, I think it just reinforces what, and this area was also in the last- conditions, I think it just reinforces what, and this area was also in the last study we did, so this isn't new information. This is certainly the areas that we have identified, we've known them to be challenges, and they continue to be, as well as going south of 28 around the Long Pond area. So, we are in design in those areas, and we'll be bringing forward, we will be bringing forward construction requests in the future relevant to those sewer expansion areas. When we go a little bit further and look at what the Board of Health adopted back in 2008, none of this was active. So, we, they adopted an interim regulation that basically said, "Hey, until you're moving forward with solutions out here, we know we have this nutrient loading in those embayments to the south, and we need to do something about it. So, we're going to put in place a regulation that really restricts what you can do on the parcels out there and limits it to, I think, four bedrooms per acre is what they were looking at within that zone." And until you come forward with something, this will stay in place, and it has until now. And so, we identified it last December, the Town Council approved projects for us to proceed, and one will be before us tonight in a non-traditional category. Another is in the works in a non-traditional category. And, and so, we brought it back to the Board of Health for consideration. So, what's changed, certainly under the traditional methods, I've already talked about that. We're evaluating sewer expansion and discharge capacity options. We'll, we're evaluating the Marshville Mills facility as well as to what to do as that nears the end of its useful life. For the non-traditional, which is a new area, it was one of the very positive things that came out of the 208 discussions. That really didn't give us any solutions. What it did was it opened the door for us to consider more than just pumps and pipes, and hopefully makes that real. We're still working with the state to get there, but, you know, they've opened that door up. They, and from that, we entered into an intermunicipal agreement with Mashpee and Sandwich for the Pompaness at watershed. We're progressing on that. We're looking at Mill Pond dredge. That's an opportunity to, Mill Pond, you know where that is, at the intersection of 149 and 28. That's an opportunity to actually detain water, slow water down coming through, coming from the river into the pond. By deepening the pond, it allows the pond to naturally absorb more of the nutrients. The nutrients are what overload the bay and help to create the problems we're having in our south side embayment systems. It's like over-fertilizing, then you have too much grow, then it dies, falls to the bottom, and it ultimately chokes the system. So, we're looking at Mill Pond, we're in the process of permitting this project, and we're trying to accelerate the permitting process, which is honestly a difficult one. And we've gone down this road before on these innovative projects. We're hoping that, given what we shared with the state through the work that the Cape Cod Commission and each community did on Cape Cod, that they are more receptive this time as we move through this process. And I'll be providing you schedules on this. We're going to try to move this project. This is an important project for us, and we're going to really push for this one to get done as quickly as we can. Dredging planned throughout the Three Bays area, the appropriation later this evening, and I spoke to the grant that we received for Phase One, Katuwet Bay entrance channel. The actual cut of that is actually a dredging project that is not only for navigation or recreation, but it also allows us to increase the flushing in and out of that bay. Not every dredging project will do this, so we're really going to have to look at dredging projects. But this one absolutely does that. It actually opens up the channel to allow flushing to occur. The Three Bays Group, now Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, had brought on, brought on a consultant to assist in doing a projected evaluation of that. They were saying 78% reduction. I've seen numbers on Mill Pond, 10 to 20% reduction. So, when we're looking at $186 million traditional solution, these percentages are significant. These are tens of millions of dollars that if we can use nature or natural processes to help, we can avoid when we, in the future, come forward with what we know we will ultimately have to do to some amount, which is go with the pipes and the pumps. So, we're going to try to use these non-traditionals anywhere where they make sense. We're looking at abandoned cranberry bogs. We're looking at aquaculture. We're looking at alternative septic systems. That's a future effort, but I really think, you know, they all grab me, but this woodchip technology in leaching fields, I really want to work with our staff and our Board of Health to see if that's something town-wide we could be working, even, even to the point of maybe with the different woody wastes we have, we can chip that up and make something available to our residents to help keep the cost down, and let's try this, because there's projections that it can reduce the loads down as much as 50%. So, why wouldn't we try that? Unless it prematurely fails or something of that nature. But again, it's innovative, but I really think we ought to talk through this and test it and see where we can go as a community with this. We've got some other innovative, you know, permeable reactive barriers up in the Three Bays area, and we're also going through the town. We've got 42 sites we're looking at for drainage improvements. That's another potential source of nutrient load. 10 under review, four funded and going forward at this point. And we'll be bringing those forward as, as they are ready to proceed, because there are other considerations than just drainage at these, at these ways to water. But when they're ready to move, we'll move them, and that'll further help in a non-traditional category. So, knowing all of this and looking at, you know, the areas that we've identified as needing nutrient removal, we didn't have that information necessarily before identified this way. So, those golden yellowish areas are where we need to do the work. The crosshatched area is where this interim reg exists. And then you throw in where we're doing sewer, where we're doing an innovative project with Mill Pond, and where we're looking to, you know, we've got the money, we're ready to move in October on the Katuwet Cut improvements, which will help flushing, which will help to reduce some percentage of nutrient load. We think that the Board of Health should revisit this interim reg and, you know, consider modification, elimination or modification. And so, that was the request that I made. I wanted you to know that. I've asked to come back to the Board of Health, and they've scheduled me for later this month. I'll be bringing staff with us so that we can try to better answer technical questions. We're not trying to do anything that'll make the problem worse, but we're also trying to balance this economic development and housing challenge that we have as well. And so, if there's opportunity in certain areas to be able to move on that, we're ready to do that. If you have any questions, but I just wanted to provide you that same update. That concludes my manager update.
Thank you, Mark. Much appreciated. Any Councilor questions or comments for the manager? Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, as usual, a great presentation. I just have a couple of questions relative to the initial part of your report. Regarding the dredging pilot program, do we have a specific list of where we're going to begin and when we said we had the shovel ready for the ground? Where are those sites that we're going to be dredging?
We, well, the one site with the $1 million is the Katuwet Cut.
Is that the Katuwet Cut?
Yes. But we do have, I believe, I believe the Director of Public Works, if he hasn't, can provide that information to the council. We haven't received it yet, we will do that. Yes. Oh, I know, he provided, I'm sorry, he provided the bike route information. I will ask him to do that, and I know he can do that. So, you can see the matrix that we have of what will be asked next and some of the projections on how much material and what we think it will cost.
If there is money left over from that dredging project, might that be applied to the Bentec mapping project over possible?
No, this is specific to, specific to, and it's a three-phase project, I believe, and I can certainly ask Director Santos to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that for all suitable sand material, that we can proceed from Phase One even into Phase Two, we're going to try to use the total $1 million toward as much of that project with the county dredge as we can. That's our intent. Then we have a window to work with it.
Just a couple of more items. I also wanted to commend Vineyard Wind in terms of having met with Nate Mayo. I think he's in the audience a couple of times, and having walked that entire district of where the potential lines might be, might be laid. I think obviously they've done their due diligence, we're doing our due diligence. But in the host agreement, do we identify any potential liabilities and how they might be addressed further down the road?
From a construction standpoint?
From construction, application, are those outlined?
It's, it's more generally identified. If you tell me a specific, I mean, we're treating it like a construction project, so all the insurances, all, you know, everything that would come with a construction project will be covered in it.
I guess I would look at the other experience, especially in Europe of, you know, whether it be in Norway or whether it be in Denmark that have huge wind turbines running on a regular basis. If they have seen any liabilities two years down the road, four years down the road, six years down the road, that weren't anticipated in an initial host agreement, that might make sense for us to consider.
I'll ask Attorney McLaughlin to research that, and I can certainly bring it forward to the council if you believe appropriate. If we find something that's applicable here, we would incorporate it.
And just two other quick issues. The dog park.
Yes.
I applaud that it's actually happening. It's been a long time coming. I'm curious about the fact that we're asking the public to police itself. What liability might we have relative to one dog mauling another, a resident getting bitten? Is that all part of the process and the discussion as opposed to just saying, "Citizens, here's the park, go have a ball"?
Well, I mean, on any, on any public land, we have that challenge. Certainly, there'll be a concentration of dogs here. It was never contemplated that we would man this facility. Turning it over to volunteers makes our liability greater. So, we are having the dog officer actively available there, but we are not planning on having a full-time staff member at that facility. That was never part of what we contemplated for that facility. I don't know that that's done. If we encounter bad behavior, I expect that we will address the behavior and go through this process like we do with any dog to remove the animal from the situation.
I would just hope that we have some kind of multimillion-dollar umbrella policy so that we're protected, because it's probably an event waiting to happen somewhere down the road, just as a precaution as we move this forward.
We had a meeting yesterday on this, actually, and talked about that we're going to need a separate set, and we, the volunteer group had put together rules and regulations that had no authority, because they went to other communities, took what they had used, and, but, but it was very clear to us early on that this needs to, if appropriate, needs to incorporate it into our regs, it can be specific to the site. I'll hold a Town Manager hearing if it's, if it's a Town Manager reg, if it's a Town Council reg, I'll have to bring it to the council. We'll adopt them, we'll give the authority to the Animal Control Officer or Officers, and their presence will be there to the level that we needed. It could, could result in budgetary impacts.
The fact that the dog park is actually at Hathaway Pond there, that is a public facility, people do use that for cookouts and for swimming during the course of the summer, there's always families there, and, you know, not to quote the song "Who Let the Dogs Out?", but there's a possibility that somewhere down the road that could happen, and it could be an issue.
Yeah, they're not allowed within the pond area.
I understand, but if you look at the pond is here, and the dog park is adjacent to it, so I'm just concerned in terms of overall security.
And so am I. And, and so, we will, we will monitor this, and we will have to plan accordingly.
And finally, just two other quick comments. I commend you and Dan and the rest of the team who will be coming next Wednesday night to the Harborview Room to respond to the citizens' concerns relative to the flooding that happened this past winter. People are still not back in their homes. People had four feet of water above their cellar line into their living rooms covering windows, so they're still very, very concerned, and we want to obviously mitigate any possibility of that happening again. So, I say this to the folks who are watching from Precinct One, as well as from any other part of town, encourage them to attend that, because I know when we've met over the past couple of weeks, that'll be a comprehensive presentation that I think will be welcomed. And finally, I just wish Paul Hebert good luck as the school committee man, having been a former school superintendent. Good luck, Paul.
Thank you, Councilor Beedenbender.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just out of curiosity, in regards to the wastewater problems that we're having, how much, how much people's septic and, and the lack of regular pumping out and cleaning of septic, how much do you think that contributes to the overall problem? And is there a way, and my ultimate question is, you know, it is, it is a task that is often put to the side, and, and my guess is that it definitely has an impact, and is there a way for us to, I don't know, to put some sort of a system in place to encourage people to, I hate to use the word enforcement, but is there something that can be done to better manage that aspect?
There is. It's a good question. I think depending on the problem that you're trying to solve, whether you pump your septic system or not can play a huge role in that. Certainly, the life of the system is the, if you design a system to perform what an onsite system's supposed to do, which basically just separates water from solids, and then somebody comes and pumps the solids when the solids fill up to a certain level, so they don't go out of the, the septic tank into the leaching field and fill it up with something that doesn't allow the water to go through the leaching field. So, if you don't pump it, that's going to happen, and it's going to prematurely fail. Now, whether it has a detrimental impact on nutrient load or not, you know, I, I don't, I'd have to look more into the correlation between the two. I mean, the primary source of nutrients to our embayments that aren't sewered is 70 to 80% comes from our urine. That's where it comes from, you know, simply said. So, but I don't know how that, the pumping of a septic system relates back to reducing the nutrient load. So, I'd really have to sit with our DPW Director and staff and see if we could create that. I do think that you're on to something, and it is, you know, this is a community-wide issue. Our water resources is a community-wide issue, and we really need to look at engaging all our citizens in this discussion. It just isn't the people on sewer, or the people who might be sewered, it's all of us. So, I think we need to investigate that opportunity, to think about, is there a way that we can engage everybody in benefiting by some regular pumping scenario? And, and we would want to utilize our council and some of perhaps our other committees to think about how doing that. So, I think that has merit, and I'll come back to you with a better answer, a more real answer about how that might be done. Some communities just require people every three years, but there's a lot of argument to that, whether it's needed or not, given the size of the family, et cetera. So, but there's, it's a good idea.
Yeah, and one of the things that had come to mind, and it's just sort of a brainstorming thing, was just thinking of the short-term rental tax and how a percentage of that money is to be earmarked for wastewater, and thinking that if we were to somehow oversee or ensure that people were pumping when they needed to get pumped, if there were families that were, you know, could show need, that maybe that's something that could be used to help with that kind of thing.
We'd have to look at the wording of how that will be ultimately adopted, because I, I think, I did see a version of it, and I think it's for capital projects, and what you're talking about is more O and M cost. So, we'll really have to think about that, but I think, I think engaging all of our citizens in this discussion and having a stake in the game here is important when we go forward, because it's not just one particular area's issue. It's all our issue.
Councilor Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mark. With respect to the non-traditional methods of nitrogen mitigation, we had planned some time ago to put two of the incubator nurseries at the top, I believe, in North Bay, and for some reason that has never transpired. Do you know if that's still on the table, and if we will be doing that at any time?
I would have to come back to you, and was, was, I'd have to come back to you after a discussion with our staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But I will, I'll come back. We are still planning to have a very aggressive aquaculture program. We do have one.
Yes.
I mean, we're the second biggest commercial producer, I think, second in Cohogs and Oysters. I don't think we're first in either, but Dan Horn- I don't think we're first in either, but Dan Horn could certainly correct me if I'm wrong in the state. So, we do have an active, we're going to grow it, we're going, the big thing is we want to do it appropriately. We want to make sure that we don't, that whatever we put out, we can manage appropriately.
Right. Mike, and also, some of these permeable reactive barriers, you know, they're little tubes of, I believe they're soybean oil is what they're made of. And it seems like a fairly cost-effective way to mitigate, because it turns nitrogen into a gas. Is, is this something that we're looking?
We're looking at any and all. So, they have specific applications where they work well and where they don't. So, it's kind of a site-specific sort of technology to choose to use. But, you know, I can, I can, I could probably ask Dan Santos or Rob Steen to come in in the future during manager communications and talk with some of these innovative technologies and where they are applicable, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hebert?
Thank you. Just a follow-up, you know, my small business is next to the Yarmouth Dog Park. And so, what I have heard is that the dogs are very well behaved. It's more the owners that have problems with one another. So, but I'm sure that they, in communication.
You're telling me I need a police officer and a dog officer there? Is that what you're telling me?
So, I'm sure they could give you some history. I think they've been there for at least two, three years, so I'm sure that they've shared.
Thank you, though, that's good observation.
I said I had a cat, just to see if I could bring the cat, but I don't have a cat, so, thank you.
Councilor Schnapp?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mark. First, I wanted to commend the DPW staff for the quick turnaround on the grant application for the million dollars. I heard it was like a couple of weeks, and I think that, that's just an excellent result. I think we had the largest grant of all the coastal communities that received it, so, it's great. I'm also pleased to hear that we're back in the running to be a Big Fix community. And I know this is way too early in the process, but I would like to hear at some point in the future on how we're doing outreach to our community to participate, because there's a lot of homeowners who would really benefit. And I'm never quite sure, in some of the other communities I've worked, I've volunteered on the Big Fix, on if we're really connecting with, with the hack and our town, so, that'd be great. And last question, maybe more directed at Ann, but we had an election on Tuesday, and I want to just find out our experience with our shifting of our precincts, how that went?
Ah, yes, the precincts. Actually, we got a lot of positive comments. We had some issues for people on 28. Not that they couldn't turn in, but they went by the area. And fortunately for us, the police were so quick. They brought out one of those vehicles that has a trailer on the back of it with the big signs and that arrows pointing, and it was fabulous. Slowed the traffic down, too, which was great, and people couldn't miss it. And so, they were, they were very quick to bring that out for us.
Did we have any signage at the old location directing?
Yes, we did. We had, I had a person that we paid to sit there all day and redirect people. And we also had signage there, so after the, the close of schools, after four o'clock, the signage was still there, and of course, there were no cars in the parking lot or anything, so that kind of helped. We did that at both locations. At the Zion Union Church, we got a lot of positive comments from that one as well. I didn't get any negatives from the Zion, so I, I don't, you know, I hope it was, it was good, John.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
There were some issues. Trust me. I was there for a good part of the day, and people were concerned, obviously, that it had changed. Some folks felt they hadn't been informed enough, but the biggest problem was, folks don't realize that we have two Zion churches in Barnstable. And a lot of people didn't realize that the newer one, which is on Avenue, around the corner from the bank, was the one that was designated as the facility to vote. And a lot of people went down to the original Zion church, which is on North Street. And so, I'm not sure how many people went from one to the other and decided, I'm just not going to vote, it's taking me too much time. So, I think the next time around, which is November 6th, we need to probably communicate that a little bit better and to, to confirm that in the morning when the ballots were actually delivered, they went to the wrong Zion church, they went to the one on North Street, and they had to come back. So, there were some issues.
We'll get that sorted out. Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Ann. All right. Vice President Crocker, could we please act on the minutes of August 16th, please?
Yes, Mr. President. In our packets tonight, we have the minutes headlined as the Town Council Meeting, August 16th, 2018. I raised to adopt them as drafted.
I have a second. All those in favor approving the minutes from the Town Council Meeting on August 16th, 2018? And that is unanimous, thank you. Councilor Communications, anyone have any announcements, updates? Councilor Beedenbender?
I just want to say thank you to Mark Els, our town manager, his department in planning and growth and conservation. I was in Pennsylvania moving my daughter into college a couple of weeks ago. It was like the 22nd or something like that, and I received a phone call and an email from someone in my precinct, in Precinct Four. They were extremely upset because they were aware that the hydrilla was going to be treated that next Monday. And it was basically, there was a high like, like, there was, it was highly likely that the Long Pond area was going to be closed for activity for that final week of summer leading into Memorial Day weekend. And I reached out to, actually, Elizabeth Jenkins had actually reached out to me earlier in the morning to give me a heads up. We had a back and forth. She spoke with conservation, and then the consultant, and they were able to move the treatment back a whole week, which made a huge difference to the constituents around Long Pond. So, I just want to thank all of you, your staff, Mark, Elizabeth, Darcy, over in conservation, for your quick action and your nimbleness on this. It made a huge difference to the people in that area, so thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Dagwah?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate the school committee for a great school opening without too many hiccups or complaints where many of the towns off Cape around had, had some setbacks. I think that the teachers were there early and prepared, and I'd have to say that most of the kids were really excited about being back. There were a few who loved to have extended their summer vacation, but I think most were bored and were ready to get back into school. So, congratulations to our school department and for the buses as well, being on time.
Anyone else? Councilor Schnapp?
Yes, I'd like to remind folks that on Sunday, September 9th, is the Marson's Mills Village Days, starting at noon to four o'clock. There's going to be live music with the Mike Dumas Band. There's going to be a bounce house and free face painting and food. And at four o'clock, Liberty Hall Men's Club will be doing their annual chicken barbecue dinner. And Matt, did you have something to add to that?
And I was just going to say, excuse me, actually, Mr. President may, thank you. Tag team there. Thank you. The, if, there's another event that day that I was asked to announce, and that is the First Annual ROAR. It is the Ride for Opioid Addiction Recovery. That will be taking place over here at Barnstable High School. Registration begins at 9:00 a.m., and it's a 24-mile motorcycle ride event, and it includes lunch and entertainment. And this is to insist in rebuilding lives from opioid addiction and recovery and transition. I believe it works side by side with the Stepping Stone program. So, not to interfere with Marson's Villas Village Day. Obviously, I would be involved in that as well, but just, there's lots of things to do, lots of things to support. And I actually will be volunteering myself for the Big Fix, and so, there's lots of things going on. And thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move into our presentations. I'd like to invite Marilyn Heberling and Rachel Youngling from the Mid-Cape Cultural Council for a presentation on the Public Art Discovery Walk project. You guys are welcome to sit here at the table you like, or the podium, whatever you prefer. Or you can take turns, you can go back and forth.
We're standing. We've been sitting a long time, so.
We're going to be sitting there for a while.
Yes.
Make sure the green light's on there. Welcome.
Green light? Yeah, we're at different heights, too, so this will be up and down. I'm Marilyn Heberling, and I am the Chair of the Mid-Cape Cultural Council, and we serve both the towns of Barnstable and Yarmouth. And this is Rachel Youngling, who is our treasurer. We thank you all for your continued support, and we're sorry that we haven't been here earlier. We've been just doing, 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 and thanks to Ms. Rap Garzetti, we thought we really need to just be in front of you, see your faces, although I know several of the faces, and also so that you can see ours, and then update you what we have been doing for, it's actually feels like forever, but it's been hot and heavy for two years. Basically, what we do is award grants to people in the arts, humanities, and sciences. And I'm a confessed, four years ago, I came from New York State. And when I moved here and found out that you don't, in New York, you have to go to one arts council for the whole state. And here, there are regional cultural councils that are dealing with local people, and it's local people and local people, and then also working with local government. And we're one of over 300 in this state. And I thought, what a concept, what a wonderful idea to work this way. So, we have been, obviously, giving our grants, working through that. This past year, we had 45 applications, which is a record, but we, again, are only awarded a certain amount of money from the Mass Cultural Council. So, we gave out 16, and eight of those were specifically, as I indicated on our handout, two served people in Barnstable, many of them served people all over the Cape, and then we also, you know, serving some in Yarmouth. As I indicated, October 15th is, again, the deadline for applications for next for 2019. So, we're sending out all kinds of information on our Facebook, on emails, in the newspaper to get as many as possible. Hopefully, not 45 again, but that would be great. I mean, I think that shows that there is a need and that there are many programs out there that are trying to serve the community. Our big thrust this year was the fundraising for the Discovery Walk. We inherited this from, actually, it was Becky Lawrence, who was the Chair of the Council at that particular time, and Marlene Ware, who was the co-chair of the Council that started the whole project. And we, again, sort of outlined a little bit about what that was about. There were three artists chosen, and then, at that point, working with Melissa Hirsch, as I do, and Jessica, we knew what our biggest goal had to be, was to first earn the money before we could even talk about installation and all the other possibilities. So, we plunged into fundraising, something that was somewhat foreign to most of the people on the Council, but I'm very pleased, as I know, Rachel, we have a really interesting, very talented group, and everybody was involved in some way, somehow. Rachel was sort of the spearhead of our crowdfunding patronicity. So, I'll let her talk a little bit about what that was about and how we earned the money through that. And actually, Mr. Crocker was almost on that video that we were going to do, but that was a day it snowed, and they didn't want to do a video outside along the harbor when it was snowing, when we're trying to raise money for something that's going to happen in the spring, so. Rachel?
Thank you. So, many of you might already be familiar with Patronicity. The bid worked with them to do all of the lighting on Main Street and to fund the new artwork that's on all the electrical boxes along Main Street. And so, that's how we became aware of it. We had a budget that we needed to raise at least $20,000 to make this a reality, because as many of you are aware, this Discovery Walk is not a financial burden for the town of Barnstable. We are fully funding this from the Council. So, up until the spring of this year, we really had only had success in raising about $700 from many various local sources and local donors, but in order to get to $20,000, we had to get a bit creative. So, we partnered with Patronicity. We had to apply and get approved through the process, and what we were, we committed to raising $11,000 on our own in an all-or-nothing campaign, so if we did not raise it, we wouldn't receive any of the funding. And by applying, we were granted a match from Mass Community Development, or Mass Development with their Commonwealth Places program. Commonwealth Places is directly funding public art and public initiatives in underserved areas in the Commonwealth. They require that you not be in a higher-income demographic in order to qualify. So, we were able to qualify on that, as well as the quality of the sculptures that we were presenting, and the fact that we would be serving locals as well as tourists. So, we had a 60-day campaign, and we were successful in raising greater than our $11,000 goal. We got $13,000 in funding. So, now, we've received 75% of our grant from Mass Development, and we're about to start the installation and implementation and hope to have everything completed by the springtime at the earliest, but we have a deadline for Mass Development that we must be completed by the end of 2019. So, we are being held hard and fast to that commitment.
The other thing that we, with, once we raised the money and we, with these three sculptures, unfortunately, one of the three sculptures, the woman, her husband died. And she asked us to be let off from the sculptures to do, and proceed on that. So, we have started a campaign to try to find a third sculpture, so that, because most, our, our original idea, the original plan, was three different sculptures. And I did include our flyer that sort of shows you somewhat of what, that it was down by the harbor, where the, some of the places might be and what the models are. Hers was the wave, so we will be looking for something, again, that is interactive, that is something like the harbor, and also that complements the others. The dream, the ideal, but we'll see how we can get through all of this, is that this, this is a bigger Discovery Walk that could eventually connect with Main Street, so that there would be sculptures through the green, that people could, you know, actually take a walk through a sculpture plan. What we are now doing is we have met with John Balagna from Coastal Engineering, with the artist. He is advising them on changing, if they need to, any of their construction. And so, that, after we get his engineer report, then we'll be talking with the, Melissa will be talking, Melissa Hirsch will be talking with the Department of Public Works, and we'll be proceeding. So, that's sort of where we are, and we will continue now to update you. Was that quick? I have a great appreciation of your job now, so.
It was efficient and thorough. I appreciate it.
Thank you, yeah. Are there any questions that you have?
Yeah, any councils have any questions? Councilor Rap Garzetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a question, but I want to thank you and the entire council for their dedication and their perseverance on this project. I know it's really been a lot to undertake, and I commend you on the amount of monies you've raised. And I'm glad, I'm sorry to hear about Sarah Porter, but I, I trust you'll be able to find someone to fill her shoes. If you could just tell us how they, just because we're being televised, if an artist is interested in participating, how they should go about contacting you?
Well, we, they can either send an application into the town hall and, and our address, but probably the best way is to get the information on our webpage and on our Facebook. We've put things in the newspapers, and we've sent out emails on that. We've put things in the newspapers, and we've sent out emails on that, but that's where they can get the direct information and where it should be sent to. So, yes, and.
May I add a little?
Sure.
Just to give a little more insight on that, we're asking that applicants consider a sculpture that can last indefinitely. This is not a temporary installation. These will be permanent installations, and that the budget not be greater than $6,000, because we don't want to take away from existing commitments we've already made. The deadline will be September 30th, and at that point, we will consider all applicants. They can be electronic submissions to our email, which is midcapecouncil2@gmail.com, or they can come directly here to the Planning and Development Department on the third floor.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much. Great to see you both. Thank you for all you're doing. All right, we're going to move into our next presentation. I'd like to invite up our Director of Finance, Mark Milne. He's going to give us preliminary budget planning for fiscal 2020, and also with the intent that this helps kind of inform our strategic workshop on the 15th. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. Nice to see you all this evening, and here we are, just implementing fiscal year 19, and we're already talking about fiscal year 20, and we're working on closing fiscal year 18, which we will have done prior to your October 4th meeting, joint meeting with the School Committee, and we can update you on the results of the fiscal year 18 operating budget. So at the beginning of this process, we'll be sending out instructions to all of our department heads in October. But to get a sense as to where we're looking, where we're going in fiscal year 20, we need to look at the fiscal year 19 budget. And as this slide indicates, about 70% of our costs in the general fund is concentrated in personnel, whether it's salaries, wages, or employee benefits. And so the major factors that drive costs in that area are our labor contracts. All unions are under contract for another year through fiscal year 20. We have county retirement assessments that we have to provide for, as well as any health insurance premium increases that are set by the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. So what are we looking at in those areas? Well, currently, our permanent salaried positions total just over $81 million. We're projecting about a 3.2% increase in those salaries, based on the existing labor contracts that we have, as well as the recent passage of the state budget included a minimum wage increase. State minimum wage will be going from $11 to $15 over a five-year period, $1 increase as of January 1st, 2019, and another 75 cents as of January 1st, 2020. So we're going to have to consider those wage increases to all of our seasonal employees. Not all of our seasonal employees are at the minimum wage. Some of them make more than the minimum wage. But if we bring the ones that making minimum wage up to the new state level, that creates some compression problems on our salary scales, salary scales for our seasonal employees. So we have to take into consideration the whole scale of salaries when we're implementing an increase like that. So worst-case scenario, it's about $120,000 increase in the budget. Health insurance, we've been averaging a little over 7% increase for the past five years. We project we can get away with about a 6% increase. We won't know what the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group sets for rates until February of 2019, but we have a little bit of excess, we believe, in the budget in fiscal year 19, which should mitigate that average rate increase that we've been experience, experiencing over the last five years. Retirement assessment, where the last actuarial calculation established a funding ratio increase of 5.3% a year. The biggest thing that impacts this assessment is the return on investments that the county retirement system experiences. Last year, they experienced over a 17% in, return on their investment. So that mitigated this increase. It dropped it down to closer to a 3% increase. So if they have another good year, we could see less than 5%, but 5% is what the actuaries have been giving us for a funding schedule, so we're planning preliminarily on using that percentage right now. Medicare tax, as wages go up, we have to account for the Medicare tax that we have to pay. Utilities and fuel, all of our utilities and fuel costs, gasoline, diesel fuel, electricity, natural gas, are all under contract for fiscal year 19, and they're all up for bids this year. We have a placeholder in here. We spend about $3 million. Our placeholder here is almost 10% for increases in the area. Our county bid for, we participate in the county bid for gasoline and diesel fuel. Last year, for fiscal year 19, those bids came in 20% higher than the year before, but we're, we're not expecting that level of increase this year at this point. Again, we won't know until the spring of next year what that will be. Contracted services, this includes things like our property and casualty insurance, our school bus transportation contracts. We're projecting a 3%, 4% increase in this area of the budget. And finally, state and county assessments, most of that is comprised of school assessments for charter, Commonwealth Charter schools, regional school district, and school choice assessments. This has averaged 5% in increase over the past five years, and so we're consistently seeing these increases, so we're using that as a placeholder for that area of the budget. So we're looking at $5 million of cost increases for the fiscal year 20 budget, about the same as what we saw for fiscal year 19. So how, we have some other spending initiatives as well that we've been working on. The first one being the OPEB funding liability. We've been trying to build a reserve to address this. We have to do something. If we show the bond rating agency that we're doing, making an attempt to start putting money aside for this liability, they won't ding us in our bond rating. So it's important that we continue this effort. We started off with nothing. We've got the annual contribution to the fund up to half a million dollars, and we've been working on increasing that at $50,000 a year. The annual target is $5.5 million, but our plan is to really start aggressively pursuing this when the pension liability's paid off, and that's what most state and local governments are doing with this. You can't, we can't afford paying both off immediately without sacrificing services. The snow removal, we originally started with a budget of $122,750,000, and I think Town Manager Ellis can tell you his experience with that, when he was Director of Public Works, and how inadequate that was. And so we've been working on building that budget up by $125,000 a year, and we're up to $850,000. Our target is to get to 1.5 million. We've been averaging about $2 million a year for snow removal costs, so if we can get to 1.5 million, I believe I'm comfortable with absorbing a half a million dollars in deficit spending and being able to raise that in the following year's budget. This is the one area of local government where we're allowed to deficit spend because of its unpredictable nature. Capital program, we started off at 1.9 million. We are up to over $9.5 million of annual funding for the capital program. Minimum, we've been working increasing this 2.5% a year, which is another $238,000. Based on all projects submitted as part of the last five-year capital program, we would need 15 million to implement that program in a five-year period. Even if we had that money, implementing that size capital program over a five-year period means more staff for DPW, because there's, there's hundreds of projects in there over the five-year period. So there's additional cost associated with that. And there's a lot of different factors that could impact that as well. What's happening in the bond market? What's happening at the federal and state ledger, state levels of, with the laws surrounding that market? So there's another $413,000 of spending initiatives that we're trying to incorporate into the budget. So the next thing we look at is what is our projected general fund revenue growth, other than property taxes? And here, we're looking at about $1.3 million in growth, another $375,000 in state aid, which is what it was for fiscal year 19. We think we'll receive the same amount of state aid increase for next year. And then all these other areas, we're projecting we can increase based on current activity levels, not because of any fee increases or anything, but based on the activity levels we've been experiencing for the past couple of years, we're comfortable that we can raise these revenue estimates to these levels. So that provides us about 1.3 million to offset that $5 million of general fund costs. So where does that leave us? We need about just over $4 million in property taxes to balance that budget. However, Proposition 2.5 only allows us to increase our base property tax levy by 2.5% or $3.1 million. So how do we close the gap every year? New property tax growth. We go out, you know, building permits are issued, there's new growth all the time in our town. You see it in the commercial area, the personal property area, the real estate area. We need to generate consistently about $1 million a year in new property tax growth in order to close our funding gap for the general fund, and that's been pretty consistent over the past five years. Here's what it's looked like. We've, we've generated, over the past five years, on average, 1.15 million in new property tax growth dollars. To get there, we need 115 million, 120 million in new building value to do this. And you can see, most of it's in the residential area. We're predominantly a residential community, 88% of our property tax basis in the residential area. But look at the commercial and industrial for the past couple of years, in '17 and ' '18, triple over what the '16 level was in '17, almost doubled in '18. And we saw a lot of commercial redevelopment over the past couple of years, and we're picking that up. Cape Cod 5 is another, is a big one that's going to be coming on over the next couple of years. We'll see that growth being added to our '19. Some of it, little bit of it in '19, because as of June 30th, '18, there wasn't much more than a hole in the ground and some, some footings out there, and that's it. But the steel is up now, it's starting to go up. So we'll pick that up in '19 and '20, probably. Personal property growth, look at the growth there from 2014, where it was 20 million. It's been 35, 28, 30, 33. That is from the utility companies. There's been major investments in the utility companies, and that's personal property. We're not seeing that in '19. The Director of Assessing reported yesterday that personal property growth is down. However, we used $950,000 of new growth for our estimate to balance the FY '19 budget. He reported to me yesterday that we, we just hit $1 million, and we're still counting. So it's growing, and we're getting, we've exceeded our estimate. We're getting that $1 million a year that we need. So that's the, the operating budget side of things. On the capital side of the budget, we have two funding sources. The first one being the Capital Trust Fund. Using the assumption that we increase that contribution 2.5% a year, we take out, we account for all of our existing debt service. You see it's declining on line six here, it declines every year. We still have $11 million of authorized and unissued debt that we anticipate on issuing in the near future. That's about $1 million a year. And this also assumes we'll continue our public roads maintenance program funding level at three, at least $3.4 million a year. We'll probably have to increase that, but we'll, we'll start with a baseline projection here of $3.4 million a year. And you'll see the ending balance here of this trust fund grows from $16.5 million to $49 million over the next 10 years. So what does that mean to us for capacity? Well, we could absorb at least another million dol, or $8 million a year in new bond issues, or $80 million of projects on top of the $34 million in cash-funded projects for the public roads program. So we're looking at a capital program in excess of $100 million over the next 10 years. Good program, still not enough for what we need to do. But that's one funding source. The next funding source we have is the Sewer and Private Way Fund. This is the new fund we've established a few years ago, as you know, dedicating our rooms, portion of our rooms tax and our meals tax. We're looking at a, the ending balance projected for the end of fiscal year 19 of 15.9 million. We have one existing debt service project of a half a million dollars coming out of this fund currently, and this fund's projected to grow from $18 million to $40 million. Enough to absorb those three sewer expansion projects that the Town Manager mentioned earlier this evening, and, and some more. We could probably absorb some more as well, if they're debt-financed. So between 110, 120 in the Capital Trust Fund and another 40 million here, we're looking at $150, $160 million in capital over the next 10 years. Pretty healthy capital program, but still far from what we need to do. And that concludes my comments for this evening. If they have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mark. Any councillor questions for Director Milne? Councilor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, have you heard anything about, when is this thing on Pleasant, Pleasant Street going to, because that's going to be 35 million?
The, yes. Yeah, the implement, when that's going to start construction? I, I don't have that answer for you tonight, but I can get that for you.
Okay. Well, I, I don't really need it, I'm just hoping that that's still moving forward and that's going to add to our base, correct?
It will. That is definitely, that would be considered new growth.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good presentation, Mark. Just a quick question. On the 17% ROI with the county retirement, that's excellent. Do they do that internally, or do they contract that out?
They're actually, all of their assets are with the PRIX system, which is the state, the system managed by the state. And so they've transferred all their assets. They did that several years ago. Yep.
And secondly, looking as we plan for fiscal year 2020, 2021, as we look at new sources of revenue, you know, one of the items that keeps getting mentioned is the potential tax increase from Airbnb, coupled with also cannabis-related sales and products and services. Is any of that, from an algorithm perspective, been built into a budget for possibilities?
Not in this projection here, so that will be additional revenue if it, if it's realized, then yes. We'll, that will only enhance our ability to grow perhaps our capital program.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? Mark, I just had a question. On the 2.5% prop, 2.5% increase, that's about $3.1 million. So basically, a half a percent is roughly $640,000, $650,000?
Yes. Yep, about $625,000.
And what is the amount that's needed just to cover the contractual increases in town? Is it 2%?
Be around 2%, yes, for the contractual wage increases.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thanks, Mark. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into the orders of the day. Under Old Business, Councilor Rap Garzetti, could you please read and open the public hearing on item 2018-074, please?
Mr. President, this is item 2018-074, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote required. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $1 million for the purpose of funding the Cotuit Bay Entrance Channel dredging project as outlined in the fiscal year 2019, fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan, as read.
Second.
We have a second, and we have Town Manager Mark Els. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark Els. This is the appropriation order that I referenced earlier, relevant to the Cotuit Cut dredging project, that we received the $1 million from the state of Massachusetts on. I previously described the associated schedule with the project. This order has been written in a manner that allows us, as written, to accept the grant and proceed with the project. So I certainly have, I have Director Santos here, certainly if there are any technical questions relevant to the dredge. I have certainly Director Milne, if there are any financial. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Now, as you know, Councilor Tinsley has left the dais. Council, discussion on this item. Vice President Crocker?
If I could, through you, ask the manager, again, this just seems to be perfect timing. Hats off to Dan's group for getting the paperwork in place, but could we talk one more time about shovel-ready, and why we're in the position to accept a grant to do this terrific project on our waterfront?
Absolutely. Well, the term shovel-ready means that we are ready to go with the project. Many times, the conditions that come with a grant are relevant to how quickly you can get to doing the grant. Many communities have contemplated various projects but aren't at the design permitting phase, so that's why it's so important that for the, the projects that are prioritized, we are at shovel-ready. We, we have projects that, certainly within a 12-month timeframe, in this case, you know, days, we're ready to move on with this sort of appropriation. This isn't the first time we've been shoveled-ready. The state of Massachusetts recognizes us for a community that plans well, prioritizes well, has strong leadership, certainly has financial. well, has strong leadership, certainly has financial capabilities. So in the event we don't have a capital project, we're moving in this direction anyways, but they like it when we're ready to go and they award the money. That's, that was a primary reason why we received this grant, and I can't speak enough about on our sewer, on our water, on our roadways, on our buildings, how important it is to have those plans and have those permits in hand, ready to move, because these opportunities do present themselves, and communities who are ready to move typically receive the money. Thank you.
Counselor Rapgrassetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I stated at last meeting, this is a long time coming, and I think we owe a debt of gratitude to a private organization that, that went through the permitting process. So now this is ready to go. This is a matching grant that we received, and I know, maybe Dan can explain the amount of cubic yards that is being taken out in each phase, and how much is phase one? Is this going to cover the entirety of phase one? Is it forty-four thousand cubic yards in phase one, or throughout the entire? I just need some clarification on that. And also, I, I hope that a grant holder outside of the cut has reached out to you with concerns about his, his beds and doing, you know, having the, the notice so that he can, if he needs to, move product away from dredge, dredge areas. If I could just have a clarification on that. And also, I couldn't write the schedule fast enough. If you could just provide me with how it's going to?
I'll send you the email.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. The project in total is forty-four thousand cubic yards, and that's going to be split in three phases over three years. And that, that is, that's the plan, that's how it's been permitting, permitted. So the matching part of the grant, what we were able to do is leverage the money that the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, formerly Three Bays, put towards the permitting, which was about one point three million dollars they spent on permitting, which is, is just, it's amazing that it costs us much to do that. That's why we put forth the dredge program, and we have pursued this maintenance dredging permit so we can minimize those permitting costs and get it all done upfront, and that's, that's going very well. And with respect to the shell fisherman, he actually spoke to me tonight and expressed his interest in knowing the details, and we'd be happy to get him the schedule so that he can do any protective measures that he needs to take before we start the dredging. But I think he's, he's on the other side, and he's far enough away, he's, he's fairly confident that it's not going to be too much of a problem, he just felt like he, he would like to know when.
I think too, I think the shell fishermen in West Bay might have more of a problem with, with any sediment moving into the bay.
So we'll, we'll put out a press release, and we'll notify people, we'll get the word out so that they have plenty of notification when the dredging's going to begin.
And just for the public, forty-four thousand cubic yards, who knows how much that is? But as far as how many feet are taken out in each phase, can you just tell us that?
I don't recall exactly the amount of feet back, cut back, I, I don't have that. I can get that to you, but I don't have it with me tonight.
Okay, I think it's about three hundred feet per, per phase, but I'm not sure, so, so if you could get that information, I think it's part of the permit, but?
Oh, yes, it is.
Yeah. Great, I'm excited for this, and I hope all my counselors will support this item. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to move the question?
Second.
Second, all those in favor moving the question? That is unanimous. This is item twenty eighteen dash zero seven four. This is a roll call, two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselors, Beadham Bender?
Yes.
Crocker James?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rapgrassetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
That some people just have an aversion to the facts. And that's why we're in this position. Yes, a little over a thousand people more voted no, but if a little over 500 had voted the other way, we wouldn't even have this conversation. It was about 2% of those who voted. Twenty-five thousand people plus voted in Barnstable on this topic. And if roughly 509, I think it was, maybe 520, had voted the other way, it would have passed. So it was very, very close. Very close. And I have been a vocal supporter of retail. Again, the quote that was in the paper that I found it hypocritical, discriminatory, and divisive, again, wasn't directed at this body. It was directed at the state level. I don't think we should even have this ability. The state of Massachusetts voted yes, and that's how it should be. So I will leave it at that. Again, I hope my fellow councilors took this time to look at how they're going to vote. I can't support it as it stands. My final comment would be, I'm just disappointed that I have heard that, well, you know, this has taken long enough, let's just do something. That's disappointing, because we should never, on any topic, pass a piece of legislation just because we're tired of talking about it. That is not the way you govern a town, or a business, or should ever make a decision just because you're tired of talking about it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Dagewan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, um, let me take a breath here. I feel that we've kind of talked about this a lot, done a lot of research on it. I've been to some of the facilities out there that manufacture, cultivate, et cetera, et cetera, on this. And I'm glad that, you know, we need to get to a point where we need to make a decision. I think there's a lot more that we need to know. There's some uncertainties that we don't know right now, and that concerns me. When I see so many people come up and talk about, you know, I'd like to start a micro business, and, you know, this is something we're looking at as well, as a town. To see a farmer come up and say, you know, you know, I have a farm, and this could be something I could add to my business. I mean, farmers, they grow and support sustainable food for the town and the country. They can also, this can also help the farmers, can support sustainable medicine as well by having it. I had several elderly people call me this week, and I'm telling you, it was bombarded with more young people than I did old, but talked about CB oil, and how that's been so helpful to them, and relieving some of their concerns. And they were just surprised that, you know, that other friends who said, what? You're using CB oil? They didn't know anything about it, and when they tried it, they found that it did, it helped them. So I do have concerns about that. To see so many come up and talk about being entrepreneurs, that's what we want. You know, in society, we want entrepreneurs. We want those people that are innovators. I mean, that's what with Microsoft and all the others, that's what made them grow. There were people who were out there saying, yeah, don't try this, don't do this, it won't work. But we had those innovators, and we need them, particularly today. This is 2020. Barnstable is a gateway city, and we have lots of advantages from being a gateway city. I see a lot of fear, and I have to say, I was very fearful too. When this first came out, fear came to mind. Oh, my God, why do we want to support cannabis or marijuana? We've got an opiate addiction out here. But I educated myself, and I tried to get beyond the fear. And not make that the number-one factor. We have young people, marijuana's been around forever. And I think we have young people, and that's what most people are concerned about, you know, what kind of, you know, what's going to happen to our young people? What kind of people are going to be drawn to this town? I invested in this town. I bought a home here. I don't want to see it go down. I'm not interested in having just some bag of barns come in and, you know, and sleeping out on the street or doing whatever. I care about the town, and I care about its future. But I was on the other side of this, totally. No way you could have convinced me to vote yes for marijuana. I heard my counselor who spoke about the school committee and others who are against it. And I understand that. I understand that strongly. I'm an educator myself, I've been an educator for 37 years, and I love the young people. And I don't want to see anything happen to any of them. But what I've seen with marijuana being around so long, we have not seen, even in my generation, we have not seen young people, all the young people out there, smoke it. It's underground. If you go to any high school, most of them can tell you where they can find marijuana. They know where it is. They can find it. Okay? So it's here. It's been here a long time. And so I want to kind of take that fear to say that, you know, we need to start to make some changes, and we can make small changes. I think to shut everything down is not the best way to go. I feel in my lifetime, I've made some great decisions. I feel that, you know, although exposed to various drugs, alcohol, opiates, I've not become addicted. I'm lucky. It's not that, you know, the dentist or someone has never given me oxycodone or whatever. For whatever reason, my biological body didn't adapt to it, it didn't become addicted to it. There are people out here who are addicted. This was opiates or drug that were, it's a legal drug, where people became addicted to. So I don't have, I've gotten over that fear of marijuana. You know, folks are going to get addicted, and, you know, we're going to have this really issue. We've got opiates out there that were given to young people by a physician, or older people by a physician. For whatever reason, some people got addicted, some didn't. And I feel this with marijuana. I think we're smart enough, I think young people are smart enough, right now, those who want to smoke it, do smoke it or find it. Those who don't, they don't get it. And I think we have to look at this intelligently, try not to be afraid of it. I feel that same thing with alcohol. You have those, you know, maybe have indulged in alcohol, and some people have become alcoholics. Let's not be afraid of this, this thing. And I don't say we take any big steps, small steps, to okay a certain portion of it and not the other side of it can be a problem. Now, you know, what if we do? I see we're talking about research and testing. We're going to be testing a product, which is cannabis, okay? Who are going to be the subject of this testing? For us to see the significant effects of health or whatever on the product. If all we do is just limit it to just this side, and we find, well, there's some great outcomes from this, we now limit ourselves, and we've not taken the time to test the other side. Why not have small micro businesses? Small. We can start small, and if we don't see what we like, we don't like the direction that's going, we can change it. I just don't want it limited to just one or two areas. I think they've come up and shared with us, I was amazed last, our last town council meeting, for the first time to see a young African-American person come in and talk about a business that she do. I very seldom see that. And I was very proud of her. She was articulate. She talked about wanting to stay here, some testing that she had done, you know, looking at growing the plants vertical. And I heard somebody say a few minutes ago about, you know, the space. Once we do this, and we shut down the farmers, and we shut down, you know, some of these other things, what if this turns out to be something, since we are testing and researching, what if it turns out to be something good? Have we shut down the advancement? How do we get back into that? So I don't want to, how do we get in then and say, oh, wow, we found all these great things came out of it, but we've limited ourselves, we said no to this, no to this, no to that, the other side of this industry? And so I just want us to get over the fear of it. I want us to consider, I may not be around, I mean, I'm in my 60s now, late 60s at that. And I just feel that it's a new generation. It's a new world, and things are changing, and we have to listen to that and not be afraid to try. I heard the town manager come up tonight, and he talked about searing, and all these new alternative searing strategies and technologies. They're trying it. They're not going back to the old searing, said, okay, well, you know, this stuff is new, we might fail. They're trying. He talked about innovation in those area for wastewater and others. We should be doing the same thing when it comes to this. I know I'm going to have people out there that just hate me, and I've already heard from them, oh, there you vote for this and that. I'm not afraid of that. Okay? I'm not afraid of that. I'm not afraid because I feel in my lifetime, I've made some good decisions. I have grandkids too. I raised five adults, and now have grandkids. Thank God, none of them are addicted to anything, but they could have. And I think you're going to find the same thing with this industry. You're going to have some that are going to abuse. We have control of it. Let's control it. Let's keep it simple, let's keep it small. And if we decide to grow, great. And if we decide this is not something we want, we have the power to roll it back. I'd say, let's not do anything huge, let's do something small. But let's listen to the people that are trying to talk to us, to us, and consider some of these avenues. I don't want to see my grandkids becoming addicted to any drug. But marijuana is one of my least concerns about addiction. There are going to be new drugs that come along. I think we got caught as a society, we got caught on the opiate thing, until we have an epidemic. Why didn't we see that? What happened? We were educated in school about drugs and whatnot, and we're still going to need to educate the future generation. That's going to be so important. Why? Because there are going to be new drugs that come out there. I didn't know anything about bath salts. What's a bath salt? And, you know, so that was a new drug, and we're going to have more, just like that. But this is not one that I am so frightened of, that I don't want to at least say, let's expand this a little bit, let's consider, let's, if we're going to do research and test it, let's do research on all of it, and see what's, and see where it goes. We think it's harmful, it's not what we need here, we're going to know that, because we've given it a chance to see that. I just don't want to shut that down. And I'll close by saying, I hate when people come up and point the finger at one another. You know, I think this council has been very thoughtful, they've put a lot of time and effort into this, I know I have. And I speak from that. I speak from here. I'm not here just to talk a bunch of rhetoric, I'm not here to put down anybody. I'm going to respect everyone on this council, regardless of the way that they vote, and I hope that they will respect me the same way. And it's hurtful for people to come up and throw venom and throw, you know, this and that at people who have a tough decision to make. I agree with my council who said, you know, this isn't the biggest thing that we're dealing with right now. It really isn't. We have some serious issues going on in town. This is just one of them, and it's not a top priority. But I'm not going to, you know, sit here and put down those of you that come up and share information and talk to us about it. I understand. I want to listen, and I've learned. I want to listen, and I want to learn from you. And I don't see you as troublemakers. Some of you didn't represent it as well as I'd like to, but most of you did, and gave it a favorable light. But at the same time, I have to look at my council members here, and I know they're going to vote with their conscience, but I don't want them to vote out of fear. I want them to, and to understand that whatever decision anybody makes here, they voted with their conscience and they voted with their heart. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Cullen?
Yes. Okay. So this has been a long time coming, this moment here, right? And I wanted to kind of go back to when I first became a town councillor, and we were facing full throttle, the opioid epidemic. And now, Councilor Levex's son is on the Barnstable Youth Commission, which was a committee that I reinvigorated to help kids with peer pressure, self-esteem, moving forward, being role models. And I know that Councilor Dagewan is very active in the Achievers Program, which is a program that I beat the bushes to fund in order to get kids who had no hope, who had no real plan for the future, to meet in a group that could help move them forward through the YMCA and the generosity of Stacy Pugh and many other foundations in town that helped fund that, not the least of which was Cheryl Bartlett through Cape Cod Hospital. She was also actually part of the Barnstable Youth Commission thing. I think it's important, I'm not making any decisions out of fear, I rarely do. I just, I don't do that. But I think it's important to note that, you know, some of the people who are proponents now for the marijuana thing have gone from 501(c)(3) to actually profiting from whether or not we open, or potentially profiting whether or not we open in Barnstable, or we open all the doors in Barnstable. I think that's a really important thing to say. Because we work as councilors for the town of Barnstable as a whole, not for a particular special interest group, and I can relate this all the way down the pike to when we had a biking group in here that wanted to put biking lanes through everything, and we all said, we're not going to respond to a special interest group because they want to go biking. We need our village integrity. And we all worked together, it wasn't this council, it was the council prior, to maintain our community integrity. So we are, as a lot of councilors have pointed out up here, stuck in the middle of a tug of war, where my precinct voted for it, other people's precincts didn't vote for it. And I think in the spirit of that, with the thousand-vote differential, I think it's really important to commit to a compromise and commit to working toward a better solution from that compromise. We also have a deadline ahead of us, and I think it's important that we work together to assure that Barnstable won't end up out of control of the situation. That's our job. And then I also believe that we should commit to reevaluating the situation on a regular basis, like we do with the curfew, like we do with a lot of our different things, and work toward a better solution. Am I suggesting that this ordinance is the final final, and it's what I want? No, that's not what I'm suggesting. But is it a place to start? Yes, it is. And, you know, I have to say that I feel like we're a thoughtful group. We've all done our research, we've all listened, we've all, you know, received the millions of emails. I actually heard from Asia Atwood yesterday, who's the African-American woman entrepreneur who came in this last time and was so impressive with her business plan, and, you know, very articulate. I completely agree, Councilor Dagewan, and she is the type of person we want in this town. We want that, absolutely. We want her to be successful here. So will this, if it passes, include her this round? Maybe not. But in six months, we can take another look. We can take another look. And I left her a voicemail message today that said, I will keep looking at the issue. But in the spirit of compromise, and moving forward, and to be able to actually gather data and figure out how it works in our community, I feel like this is, you know, it's a best foot forward to start, or it's a good foot forward to start. Nobody's going to get whatever they want out of the gate, but we're going to fine-tune it and keep going with it. So that's where I stand on the issue. I consider it like a work in progress. I know a lot of people have put a lot of passion, a lot of time, a lot of caring, a lot of emotion into it. I've seen the same faces time and time again up here, and I appreciate that. And now we're in a situation where we need to make a decision, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my fellow councilors have spoken passionately, they've spoken honestly, and I think the fact that we as a society, both at the national level, the state level, and the local level, more often than not, have probably lost the ability to reach a compromise and to disagree without being disagreeable. And I hope that that's not going to be the case this evening. But what concerns me is that, I think for the most part, when people voted against the marijuana bill as it was initially legislated and written a number of years ago, people thought of it really from a recreational perspective. I mean, if you had asked most people if they really understood everything from research testing to transportation, to cultivation, to product manufacturing, to micro businesses, as well as crap cooperatives, they wouldn't have had a clue. I know for a fact I didn't at that point in time. I've done my own education, I've done my own research. I think, as Councilor Dagewan mentioned, this is probably not the most serious issue that we're going to face, but it's probably one of the most emotional, at least in my tenure as a councillor. And I think that if we look at this from the perspective that we have the ability to expand what might be passed this evening, just as we have the ability to roll it back, if in fact we deemed that was in the best interest of the community, is something that I really think we have to take a serious look at. And there is the expression, don't let excellence be the enemy of good. And I'm not suggesting that this particular ordinance, if it passes tonight, is excellent. I'm not even saying that it's good, but I'm saying it is a compromise in terms of where we began a few months ago and where we are today. And it's a beginning place. It puts a stake in the ground that says, this is what we're agreeing to tonight as a council, which is going to allow a number of different opportunities, from marijuana cultivation to research facilities to independent testing laboratories. And if we need to expand the size, if we need 50,000 square feet versus 100,000 square feet, that can still happen down the road. So from a compromise perspective, I think that what is in front of us tonight as item number 2019-15 is not excellent, but I think it's a good start for us.
Anyone else? Councilor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think I'm the only veteran in the council, Vietnam era. So my fellow veterans, and I know there's several in the room here, thank you very much, I know you in the Air Force, and then there was a gentleman who was here earlier, at least at the last council meeting, I think it was, from the Iraq War. And so one of their concerns to me, that Dave expressed to me, is that it's very, very important to them for some of their pain control and stuff. And so my first response to them was, are you able to get it readily right now? And the answer was yes. So I'm very concerned about making sure that people who are suffering, whether it's from cancer or accidents or whatever, that they get it for their pain control. And so I'm dedicated to making sure that it happens for them. I don't want to think small, I want to think big. And I want to think what is the best to serve the greatest number of people. And I think that this effort that we're making right now is a beginning to think big. And so again, I'm asking you not to think small, or that we're restrictive. I think we're thinking very large, and I think some very, very good things could happen. So I think that we're making a good effort. Thanks.
Councilor Rafferty?
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't repeat what my fellow councilors have said thus far, but I will start off by saying that I take exception, and I see that he's left the room. But I take exception to Mr. Elrich's comment that we don't think and aren't thoughtful in our decision-making. And I'm targeting Mr. Elrich because he sat up here for many years as a councillor. And this issue has taken a lot of our time and our effort. One thing that troubles me about this whole process is I sit on a subcommittee of the council called zoning and permitting regulations to review. The manner in which this amended zoning, or even the initial item that came before us to zone recreational marijuana, didn't come to committee, which was really surprising because we're looking at the HB district and looking to fine-tune that to encourage businesses in the community. So I felt like there was a disconnect in this process. Am I glad that the first item got withdrawn? I am. And I have to say, I represent Precinct 7, who voted resoundly against question four. I've heard from several constituents, some that are veterans, who said they need marijuana to help with pain. To that, I would say, we have medical marijuana, it's legal. You can get a prescription from your physician, and you can acquire it legally, right in Mashpee, for one. So saying that this ordinance would allow veterans to procure it, that's not going to happen, not with this, because we've excluded the retail on this item. I don't want to preclude people that need this drug for pain management, for their mental health, however they use it. I don't want to preclude that. However, I have to vote how my constituents have spoken to me. I don't want an outright ban because, as what's been stated, we have an alcohol problem. I'd like to see the number of alcohol licenses drastically cut. Do I want us to go dry? No. But we haphazardly parlay those liquor licenses for millions of dollars, and they're allowed to be transferred haphazardly and concentrated, which concerns me. But here we are, talking about a drug. It's now become legal in the state of Massachusetts. This ordinance, this amendment to the zoning ordinance, is a little short-sighted as far as I'm concerned. However, in this case, I am going to defer to my fellow councilors in Hyannis where this is going to fall. Like other items with regards to zoning, and I'm looking at it purely for the zoning issue tonight, I have to defer to my fellow councilors, just like I did with the first item that got withdrawn, where it was in Precinct 1, and Council Flores took exception to that. I see their support in Hyannis for this, albeit this zone, the zoning ordinance, is very limiting. But it doesn't preclude, as what's been stated, some further study and revision to it. And I would hope that if this does succeed, that that can go back to committee perhaps for some further study and perhaps expansion. What I find to be very interesting is that we have zoned, and we passed zoning as the council, to allow for medical marijuana facilities in Barnstable. No one has come forth to place a facility in Independence Park. I have to question why that is. It's not because there's lack of space, because it really doesn't require that much space to be a medical facility. But that's just a curious question. Also, I think the Cannabis Control Commission is going to make it very, very difficult for entrepreneurs and small businessmen to succeed in this business. I see this as being taken over by big business, just like we have Big Pharma. I think that's what's going to happen here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to move the question? I have a second. All those in favor moving the question? All those opposed? None. Okay. This is item 2019-015. It's a roll call, two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk? None. Okay. Uh, this is item 2019-015. It's a roll call, two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
No.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Pass.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
No.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
No.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eden Bender?
No.
And back to you, Jessica?
No.
That was five no's. And is this a two-thirds, or is this a?
Two-thirds. So, it gets the majority, but not the nine. All right, so we're going to move on to Vice President Crocker. Could you please read item 2018-159 and continue to September 20th, please?
Yes, Mr. President. 2018-159, public hearing and open it and extend it to September?
20th.
20th. Order to amend the zoning ordinance to prohibit non-medical marijuana in all zoning districts within the town of Barnstable.
I have a second. All those in favor of opening, continuing the public hearing on item 2018-159 to September 20th, 2018? All those opposed? That's one. And Counselor Cullum is off the dais. All right, moving on. Item 2019-018, Counselor Tinsley. Could you please read and open the public hearing on that item?
Yes, Mr. President, through you. Excuse me. Old Business Public Hearing, item number 2018-018, authorizing the town manager to execute a regulatory agreement between the town of Barnstable and Big Pink Limited Partnership, as written.
All right, we have our Director of Economic Development here, Elizabeth Jenkins. Welcome. In planning, I should say.
Planning and, uh, planning and development. Good evening, counselors. It was, for the record, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. First, just an item of clarification. We do have the applicant here this evening from Big Pink Limited Partnership. They were the ones who provided the written rationale that you see in your, in your town council agenda. It did give the impression that I think that, that did come from me, so I did just want to clarify that for the record to start. First, just a, a very brief overview of the project. This is, again, a regulatory agreement in the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, authorized under Chapter 168 of our general ordinances. The subject property is a lot, a approximately 4,000 square foot lot located at 49 Elm Avenue in Hyannis. This is a building, if you're familiar with the area, adjacent to the Horgan Insurance Office and behind the Federated Church Cemetery on, on Elm Street, across from the, the new nine-unit apartment project that went there. The proposal is, again, for a regulatory agreement, seeking waivers from the zoning ordinance to convert, essentially at this point, to convert the first floor of the building from, from office space to, to new residential units. One would be a studio apartment, one would be a two-bedroom apartment. There is an existing two-bedroom apartment on the second floor. Because the lot is very small, there are waivers required from both the density regulations in the Hyannis Village Business Zoning District, as well as the parking requirements. Again, being a very small lot, limited parking available there. Just a quick update on procedure and how this has proceeded through the process. This did, this application did receive site plan review approval. It did receive an affirmative majority vote of the planning board, again, as required by Chapter 168. The applicant did appear in front of the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District to review the, some of the exterior improvements that were proposed. There's been certainly a lot of discussion, at least at planning board, regarding the boundary of the property as it meets the Federated Church property. The applicant has agreed to install a fence there to ensure there is no encroachment on that property. I'll just note that the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District did ask the applicant to provide a fence similar to the white, to the white fence you see in the pictures, in the, in the materials that were provided, as opposed to the proposed split rail fence, as was temporarily installed on the property today. So, again, the applicant is here and I think may wish to make comment, but I would be happy to speak to any other procedural or technical questions on this.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. So, any members of the public who are supposed to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anthony Mazzio, representing the Big Pink Limited Partnership. This is Jeffrey Line, the managing partner. Thank you guys for having us tonight. I know it's, it's getting late, and you're all volunteering your time. And as we've heard, everyone's very passionate and caring about all the decisions that are being made tonight, so we appreciate that. What we have tonight is something that even just sitting here tonight, we can seek and solve some of the problems that were brought up, and specifically the housing issue. We're basically proposing to add two new units to the downtown Hyannis area. We're adding these, these units within walking distance to many of the shops and many of the restaurants, so it's going to be, it's going to work out very well for, for people in the workforce. It's also right near the transportation center, so it's going to be easy for people to commute certain, to other areas if that's, if that's what they choose to do. The other issue, obviously, was brought up with, with the town revenue and, and taxes. You know, now we're going to be taking a building that was vacant on the first floor, and we're now going to have some residential units on the first floor. So, currently, what we have right now is a two-bedroom unit on the second floor. We are going to, we propose to divide the first floor, so we'll have a studio apartment and a one-bedroom apartment on the first floor. We, we're going to make improvements to the exterior of the building, which, you know, will, will make it nicer for, for a road that seems to be fairly well-traveled. We're also, kind of, to add bicycle, bicycle access bike racks. We're going to put a fence up. The neighbors were concerned about parking, so we've, we've proposed to put in a fence. That's been approved. We talked to historic about it. We all think that looks, looks good. And, and the other thing, too, that's nice, is when you have a vacant building, it can, it can attract people, you know, to vacant buildings, people hanging around outside, behind the building. We're hoping that, you know, now that we're going to make this nice, make this a rentable unit, it might dissuade some of that activity as well.
Thank you. Any counselor questions? Do I have a motion to move the question? All those in favor moving the question? And there's your name. This is item 2018-018. It's a roll call, two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker? Oops. Sorry. That would be 12.
That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2019-019, please?
This is Old Business May Be Acted Upon, 2019-019, Resolve Authorizing the Town Manager to Execute a Host Community Agreement with Vineyard Wind LLC for the project currently pending before the Commonwealth Department of Public Utilities and DPU 18-18 and 18-19, and with the Energy Facilities Siting Board and EFSB 17-05, as read.
I have a second. And Town Manager Mark Els is back.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. I had spoke to the host community agreement earlier in my Town Manager Communications. What I had hoped to do in support of this request for authorization for the Town Manager to execute a host community agreement with Vineyard Wind is just kind of broaden that discussion and give you a little more detail on what we're discussing. Also here with me is Charlie McLaughlin, Town Attorney, who is assisting me in these discussions, as well as assisting in the other processes that I described to you that are running concurrently with my discussions with Vineyard Wind on establishing a, a host community agreement. Also here with me, though we, we, it is beyond, I believe, to, my intent wasn't to have Vineyard Wind here to get into a full-blown discussion of the details of the project, but seeing that Eric Stevens and, and Mayo and I have been meeting twice a week for months, they wanted to be here this evening. I encouraged it. And certainly, at the discretion of the President of the Town Council, they are here, if appropriate, to ask any questions of. So, a host agreement is basically looking at the project as it exists within the town of Barnstable and establishing how we will deal with the landing, deal with the routing of the cable, deal with the substations, deal with the, perhaps, emergency response that may be required as part of having these exist in our community, look at the other issues associated with primarily a construction project, not a unique construction project to Barnstable. We have another landing of the cable from Nantucket. I was actually involved with that. When that was done, it comes up Ocean Street. It lands down at Calmas Beach. We don't have major issues. We had a host agreement. We executed that host agreement. I was involved in closing it out many years ago as a project manager. This process is not unlike that, though I think this is more complicated because it involves a proceeding project that, obviously, we were not favorable. Um, you know, we, we did not look favorably upon. That project did not proceed. One of the issues is making sure that a project like that won't occur and ultimately somehow interconnect to this project. Another aspect of this are the substation or substations, if they move into a Phase 2 of this, which may occur within the next several years, and some of the environmental factors that are of great importance to us. And then just a, a fairly large construction project. You've got a landing, whether it's in Yarmouth or here. You've got routing of cable in public roads. You've got the construction of substations. So, all of the, the safeties, sureties, your liabilities that, that go along with a construction project, the, you know, certainly Vineyard Wind will carry those responsibilities with them, the permitting aspects certainly. And so, that's what we have been discussing. In addition to this, we've also been discussing the, the establishment of the valuation of, separate from the host agreement, we've been discussing the valuation of the property, and I'll, I'll go through that in a minute. So, what they will pay in taxes, Mark Millen earlier referenced, the personal property tax, that's the category, I believe, that this will fall into. And we're working with them on establishing what that will be on an annual basis. Within the host agreement process, we're establishing a mitigation fee that they will pay us to potentially hose the upgrade of a, addition, addition of a modernized substation. That's the primary focus of the mitigation. But they also have a potential landing, and they have the routing of cable. And I'll show you what those, my intent of the presentation is really to just give you a little more information if you haven't seen it already. It's definitely worthwhile to go into the website that I provided you in the manager's report, and it's about a 25 to 30-page PowerPoint. It's also, Vineyard Wind is available, whether it's individually or on a more collective basis. I know the Greater Hyannis Civic Association reached out to me, and I encouraged them to have Vineyard Wind come in and speak to them regarding the project. But they're available to discuss with any and all what they're doing in this project. So, real quickly, you know, the, what occurred was the, the government, federal government, put out, you know, an area where they would consider these wind farms, and Vineyard Wind was awarded one of the areas. It's that, it's that light blue, and then the darker blue is the area that Vineyard Wind was awarded. It was a public procurement process. They competitively obtained that area to be able to site wind. It, you can see, it's not within, you know, the, the area that the previous project was proposed. It's significantly south, southeast of that area, off of Mother's Vineyard in Nantucket. A couple of things are shown here. The routing from that area into both the town of Yarmouth, which in the EFSB filing is the primary landing, and then Koval's Beach, which is the proposed secondary landing. But if awarded the second phase, would be the proposed primary landing. I also showed where there's existing cables, and, and the one that's center, a little bit, a little bit right of center, going from Nantucket into Hyannis, is that cable that runs into the end of Ocean Street at Calmas. Just to give you a feeling for the fact that this already exists, in a sense, these, these cables landing along our shoreline. So, we do have some reference point as to how, how do, how do these exist in our environment? What challenges might they present? What problems might they present? To my knowledge, the cable from Nantucket to Calmas hasn't presented problems. So, the yellowish line that turns a little bit red and looks dotted, because that's the secondary landing, is the one that runs into Koval's. Once it either goes to New Hampshire Ave. over in Yarmouth or Koval's in Barnstable, and the way they're running their permitting process and site review is they're running these concurrent and evaluating both concurrent. And so, we're going to treat this in a kind of a dual process, where whichever one of these they end up with, and you can see that the amount of cable, if they come in through Yarmouth, is different than it would be if they come in through Koval's, but we're going to run it so whichever one they have, the, the host agreement will be applicable. And if they come in through Koval's in the first phase, there's also the ability for us to recover all restoration of the site, repaving of the entire parking lot, mitigation money toward restoration of our comfort station there. And then, in general, relevant to the siting of the substations, there is a mitigation fee that they would pay. In addition to all of this, there will be the valuation of the personal property, and Ed Moniel will establish, and through, from Ed to Mark Millen to me, they'll tell me what they believe the taxes that we will recover as a result of this project will be. But that is separate, outside of the host agreement. So, what's going on? There, before the Energy Facility Siting Board, Charlie McLaughlin is really running lead under my request on this matter. They have a very rigorous process, filing dates, public hearings. The link I gave you was to their previous public hearing in April. hearings. The link I gave you was to their previous public hearing in April, and we are continuing along those lines, expressing the comments and concerns that we may have relevant to the project. And we are doing it openly with Vineyard Wind. They know exactly what we're doing, and they also know that as we enter into the host agreement, that will lift some of those concerns and comments from this process. They're going through the MEPA process, which we submitted comments on. We're discussing the host agreement. We're discussing the potential for an easement at Covell's Beach, and that's where this Article 97 issue comes into play, and it's unclear. And right now, the strategy, I believe, is they're going to go to the Secretary of Environmental Affairs and Matt Beaton, and they're going to have a discussion as to whether this requires Article 97 deposition, and if it requires that, is that requirement solely to the area of the easement or the entire parcel that encompasses Covell's Beach? That is unclear. And so, that process is ongoing. And if it is an Article 97, and if it does require disposal, then it will need to go through Conservation, Town Council, and then State Legislature. And I think that we will have to have, you know, certainly discussions relevant to that and what the implications of that are. This is subsurface through that area, so we'll have to look at that issue as well, relevant to questions about land and value, et cetera. And I've described that our assessor is evaluating the valuations of the assets. Vineyard Wind has agreed to provide us with those financials, but required that we enter into a confidentiality agreement. I signed that agreement so that we will not disclose because those numbers are, you know, confidential to them, relevant to their business and their business dealings. So, you know, it's limited to myself, Charlie, Mark Millen at O'Neil, maybe another, Andy may be on that list. But, you know, ultimately, that will become public information. But as we move forward through this process, we will be going back and forth so that we will better understand that aspect of it. So, what we're asking for you to approve in this resolve is for your Town Manager to be able to proceed with entering into a host community agreement. And, you know, the major parts have already covered this, but it gets into the details and the conditions of the cable routing, the substations, the cable landfall. There is a Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is the primary focus of this, but Phase Two, as described to me by Vineyard Wind, could occur within the next two to three years. They may be awarded it. So, a part of the discussion is, okay, so if that will come in through Covell's, and you're not going to do Covell's Phase One, what will that mean? If you're going to try to do Covell's Phase One, you want to put the conduit in the ground now so you're not back out there in two years, cutting the parking lot, disturbing the neighborhood again. So, we want to make sure that we've planned various scenarios and understand what an appropriate host agreement would be relevant to those scenarios so that we can certainly protect our community, our resources, and minimize a disruption to our residents and visitors. And then, obviously, discussing the mitigation payment and what we believe to be an equitable amount, given what they're proposing to do. There's also language, as I said earlier, about, you know, safety and safety response in there. This will be treated just like any other construction project, so they're going to have to have appropriate, you know, insurances. They incur liability during that construction. They have to provide all permits that are required. They have to pay for appropriate details to cover them during construction. Everything that we do on a regular basis, they'll be required to do no different. And that's what we're doing in the host, community host agreement.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate the update. I just want to ask the Town Attorney, come up briefly, just to kind of give us, the council, a quick overview of the Enabling Act with the Charter, or Charlie can do this, and how this, you know, falls under the manager purview, just so the council understands that.
Certainly, the process that we've used in Cape Wind and we're now using is to work hand and glove with the manager, who is in turn in direct contact with council leadership, and we have been working, as these issues have arisen, to give status reports and suggested options and guidance to the manager, and it has been very helpful. That's brought back the, a lot of the meat and potatoes business issues have been dealt with by the manager directly with Vineyard Wind's leadership and Mr. Stevens, who is present tonight, and that ongoing process is going on. Meanwhile, in terms of some of the interesting legal issues and protective issues that we have identified from past experience, it's been, that experience was not wasted on us in any sense, and things that we've learned about these projects and the risks they pose have been very much integrated into the drafts which we have provided to Vineyard Wind folks, and we've been slowly narrowing the issues. We spent seven hours today working on that again, and I must say, where the list of troublesome issues is narrowed dramatically, but in terms of the process that we intend to use is to bring it back to the manager and with perhaps your approval tonight to give the manager authority as the Chief Contracting Officer and Chief Executive Officer of the town to allow him to execute it in consultation with council leadership and to do so as soon as possible. This is a very time-sensitive process up at the EFSB. We're on incredibly tight time deadlines at this point for submission of evidence and things of that nature, and I'm going full bore on that, as well as working the negotiation side as backup. And the EFSB intends to embark on their hearings on October 4th, and we've got something like 15 or 16 days of hearings in October and another spillover dates into early November, followed by briefing, et cetera, et cetera. The process here would be that if we are successful in wrapping up the negotiations, the thought would be that Mark would be guiding that process and making those final decisions, and if it's acceptable to him with the ongoing discussions we've had with you folks to authorize him to complete that process, to then sign the agreement, and we would move forward without the necessity necessarily coming back to you. If we have issues that arise post-agreement, we've built in some opportunities there, either to bring it back to you folks for guidance as we consider what our options are, but we're clearly intending to preserve some options at the EFSB so that even with the filed, signed agreement, if we run into some bumps on the road that need some further help, I could get into those, but it's probably premature to spend your time tonight. We'd have the option to go back and have a half-day hearings if we can't agree on them. But it's been a very collegial process. We're working with one of the top licensing permitting firms in Boston, Foley Hoag, and well-known to many of you, and it's been a pleasure working with them. So, tough issues, a lot of good negotiating, and we're getting them. But that's the process.
Thank you, Charlie. Any council discussion on this item? Do I have a motion to move the question?
Sorry, Chair.
All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2019-019. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Rep. Cessidy?
Mr. President, I'd like to invoke Rule 6F of Town Council for reconsideration. As I sat on the prevailing side, I'd like to move for immediate reconsideration of item 2019-015.
Have a second. Discussion on this reconsideration? Counselor Tinsley?
Could we have the Town Attorney? Because wouldn't immediate reconsideration be right after the vote, and so if you wanted to reconsider, it'd be at the next meeting?
No, but I'll let the Town Attorney explain.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody, Mr. President. For the record, Ruth Wile, as I read Rule 6F, immediate reconsideration, which deserves notice, that a motion for reconsideration shall take place at the next regular meeting. If you read that in context, immediate means the night of the vote. It doesn't mean, you know, thereafter, because you have to read the incised sentence in context, and that's my interpretation. That is how it's been interpreted over the years. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Rep. Cessidy?
In, the reason why I want to reconsider this vote is, in counting up the votes that were in favor of this zoning amendment, I have concerns that the ban, which is going to be continued to our next meeting, will not have sufficient votes to pass, which leaves this town vulnerable to retail, anything, farming, retail, across the entire town. And I don't want that to happen. So, that's my reason for reconsideration, to put something in place, because if we don't put something in place by the end of the year, that's what will happen. And I don't see this council coming together for a vote of nine to ban. So, that's my basis for reconsideration.
Any other counselors? Counselor Tinsley?
Where I disagree with that line of training is we have plenty of time to take the one that was eight to three, eight to five, excuse me, and tweak it. First reading, we have more than enough time to make the adjustments to that and pass something so we don't come to that point that you want. And the wild, someone wants to open a business, they still have to go through planning and zoning. They just can't open. But we still have more than enough time to take that compromise and adjust it for a reading and a second reading and a vote, so we have something we can get nine votes on, as opposed to just saying yes to something that, the answer to the question you posed earlier is we don't have the medical and the industrial part because that's not where they want to go. It's not conducive to that type of businesses, from what I hear. And this compromise, we're not going to have anyone do that where this is zoned either. It's just, it's not going to happen. So, I don't think we have to rush in and just vote it yes so the other one won't be invoked. But again, that's, everyone has their own vote.
Okay. This is a discussion whether or not to reconsider the vote on the item. Any other counselors?
Move the question.
Do I have a second to move the question?
Second.
All those in favor moving the question? All those opposed? Okay. So, this is a vote to, on the reconsideration of item 2019-015, to reconsider the vote. All those in favor of reconsidering the vote on item 2019-015? Opposed? All right, so reconsider the item. So, we're back to item 2019-015 as written. Any council discussion on this item?
Move the question.
I have a second. All those in favor moving the question?
There are a number of people who wanted to, they had hands up to make comments.
I just heard "move the question." Do you want to, do you want to pull a move?
Yeah, I didn't see my hands up.
Okay. Who had their hand up? Okay. Counselor Heber?
Thank you, and thank you for the reconsideration. I appreciate it. Thank you. So, again, I'm really sorry that I can't seem to get my head around this, but it would seem to me that having, if we pass this, then it's a clean canvas. So, if I want to, if I wanted to apply for a medical distribution, even though it's not there, if I wanted to apply for that, I could come to this council and ask for zoning change because it's, if I was going to do a medical dispensary, I'd like it to be in a medical district. I'd like, the zoning is perfect because I'd be between Yarmouth and Barnstable, two of the biggest communities. From a marketing point of view, yes, thank you very much. And since many of us are concerned about the pain relief from it, so that's just the medical. So, if there's anything else, people can come to us and say, this is my idea. This is what I'd like to do. What do you think? And give us some more information, positive information, and bring it forward, regardless of whether it's for a recreation shop or whatever it is. I think that this is pretty broad in the way that we're presenting it, as opposed to a yes or no in our town. So, you know, I do hope that we can reconsider this for its value. Thank you.
Counselor Beedenbender?
I would just have to agree with Counselor Tinsley that if we're as nimble a council as has been stated, then we have more than ample time to look at this ordinance and make some changes. That would make it an ordinance that might actually yield some good for the town. I would also just caution, and this is the fear part about the Wild West of if we don't do anything, A, first of all, we will do something. We have time to do something. But the other part of it is that the Cannabis Control Commission has so many safeguards around what can be put where and how it can be presented to the public, that a lot of those concerns that people have are mitigated by all of those controls that the Cannabis Commission has put into place. So, I would just say that I do think we have the time, and I think we should take the time to relook at this, go to zoning, get some feedback, and come up with an ordinance that is a little bit more welcoming to businesses, not retail, but to micro businesses, the co-ops, the cultivators, the manufacturers. I mean, rather than just limiting it so finitely like it is right now, which in all honesty, is not conducive to small or big business, the way it's zoned.
Anyone else? Counselor Rep. Cessidy?
I would question, if we would go back to our previous meeting, the Charter objection by Counselor Tinsley, I thought perhaps from that Charter objection, we might get some amendment to this item, and nothing came. And so, and that was a few weeks ago. So, I was surprised that nothing came forward when he gave himself that opportunity to do so. So, anyway.
Counselor Flores?
Just a question in terms of protocol. If this item passes as written, can we then reconsider this down the road to amend it as folks want?
Any zoning anywhere in town, any district, you can add a use.
You have to go through the steps.
You have to go through the steps.
Yeah. So, my point being is that this establishes a base minimum, but if we pass this, we have a stake in the ground, but then we can follow up accordingly.
That's what we've been saying.
Between now and December 31st and do exactly what Counselor Beedenbender is requesting and other counselors, correct?
You go through the process to possibly add a use.
Thank you.
Counselor Tinsley?
I have to respond, though I did mention that when we spoke during this item. Two of the amendments I wanted to make, after speaking to the Town Attorney, I could not make. I could not add uses to this piece of legislation. I couldn't add micro business. I couldn't add product manufacturer. That's not allowed. As far as the agricultural side, that's something I will look at with the Town Attorney, but that's a separate issue at this point, because I was mistaken on the type of agricultural permits that you need. You don't actually need one. We're zoned for agriculture everywhere. So, that's why you didn't see the amendments.
Anyone else?
Move the question.
I had a hand up. Do you want to withdraw the air? Motion to move the question? Counselor Dagwone?
My concern is that whichever way you're going to vote, accept the vote that comes out. It seems like the last few times, you know, we're still trying to manipulate this to get, one side wants to get something and the other side wants to do something else, and we're just not being honest to ourselves, honest to the public. Reconciliations, I mean, all these things that are coming up just don't smell right to me. It just seems like it's, we're just not being honest to the people, and particularly just being upfront and honest to ourselves. So, I just wanted to say that. So I just wanted to say that.
Anyone else? Counselor Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been kind of quiet on this issue. In my feelings about it, it definitely does not rank in the top 10 issues that our town faces. I don't think that the revenue, when you look at, just for example, the fiscal year 2020 budget, I mean, we're talking small numbers. Granted, we're looking for new tax dollars. My precinct, Precinct 6, voted against it. Voted against it. My personal belief is medical use has tremendous potential, and I believe it should be fostered. I think the section of our attempt to pass zoning on this, to have it down by the medical area, I think makes sense. This is not an emotional issue for me. I don't hold anybody in disregard, regardless on either side of the position that you're I can get into the emotional response about the elimination of the black market. Many states have not really found a drop-off in that. But that's irrelevant. We're talking about zoning here. That's all we're talking about. Maybe it's about cultivation. Maybe that's the missing link piece that would make people more comfortable with this. Regardless, I think it's something that can be addressed. But I do fear that the lack of, we're talking about fear. I don't fear marijuana. I think cannabis will have its day. I really do. I just, I think that we need to make an appropriate response to it currently, act on it, and continue to discuss it. I will tell you, I think early on, I'd probably made some pre-decisions on where I was going to go. And I actually enjoy the debate that's gone back and forth, and I think the knowledge that everyone has learned here in this room regarding cannabis. I can tell you that the school department doesn't want it. I can tell you that our police department has stated they don't want it. Although I believe we have arguably the best leadership in our town in terms of management, I'm not sure that we have the ability to manage it just yet. I feel my opinion is that. All of these things will come out, and they're going to come out in a shorter period of time than a longer period of time. And then we can take maybe best practices that we're finding around the country and That's my opinion on it. And that's why, you know, I'm voting to at least get it established in the town, give us control over the process, and we can revisit the process. My opinion.
Anyone else? Counselor Flores, you haven't spoken yet.
Just one comment. I think everyone knows that Precinct 1, as a precinct in town, had the most overwhelmingly negative vote for approval. So it's something that I need to represent. But at the same time, when we talk about medical marijuana, for all intents and purposes, that can't be outlawed, just a matter of where it's zoned and where it's approved. So I think that's a null point. The other issue that I want to make sure that we understand is that the only place that we're going to make revenue is through the retail market. All of that, whether you're a cultivator, whether you're a farm, there's not that 3% tax, there's none of that that comes with it. So, you know, that's immaterial and really an empty argument for passing anything above and beyond what we're doing tonight. So I'll go back to my initial comment. You know, let's not, you know, have excellence be the enemy of good. I think this puts a stake in the ground. It establishes not everything that we want, but some of the things that we want. And as I stated earlier, we can always come back. And we say we're nimble. We can always come back two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, a month, two months, and readjust this accordingly if we go through the appropriate zoning procedures. So I think those are all concerned issues that we should take into account as we move forward with this vote.
Anyone else? Counselor Dagwone?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, we need to stop, all we're doing is kicking this can down the road. Let's make a decision and let's stick with it. I think that's troubling me. It's been stated several times that this is not the biggest thing on our plate right now. But it is, it may be one of the most emotional, but we need to make a decision and stick with it. That's just my feeling on this. And I feel like we're wavering and wandering and going back and forth from one side to the other. And when one side prevails, then all of a sudden, we want to, you know, look at something So, you know, let's just think about that, because it's bringing people here to hear this topic, and they're taking time out of their day, and they're taking time out of their lives, because it's important to them, and they're showing up, and they're speaking, they're letting us know, and we need to respect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wallace?
Move the question.
Second. All those in favor moving the question? All those opposed? All right. This is item 2019-015. This is a roll call, two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselors, Dagwone?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Raporessi? Yes. Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
No.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
No.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Nope.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwone?
No.
That's four no.
Nine. It passes. All right. Counselor Raporessi, could you please read item 2019-020?
This is old business may be acted upon. Item 2019-020, appointments to a board committee or commission resolved. The town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Airport commission, Norman Wheel, from Katuut, regular member, term expiring 6/30/2021. Community preservation committee, Catherine Garofoli, Hyannis, regular member, to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, Cheryl Powell, Centerville, as a historical commission representative, member to a term expiring 6/30/2020. Infrastructure and Energy Committee, Peter Doyle, Ostriville, regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Licensing authority, David Nunheimer, West Barnstable, as an associate member to a full member, to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Youth commission, Morgan Contrino, as a regular member, to a term expiring 6/30/2019, as read.
I have a second. This is item 2019-020. Appointments to a board committee or commission. All those in favor of this item? All those opposed? That's unanimous. Counselor Raporessi, can you continue on with item 021, please?
This may be acted upon. Old Business, item 2019-021, reappointments to a board committee or commission that the town council reappoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Community preservation committee, Deborah Converse, Centerville, as at Barnstable Housing Authority, representative, member to a term expiring 6/30/2021. Recreation commission, Renee Dowling, Hyannis, as a regular member, to a term expiring 6/30/2019. And Renee King, Centerville, as a regular member, to a term expiring 6/30/2020, as read.
Second. This is item 2019-021, reappointments to a board committee or commission. All those in favor of this item? Can you, yeah, all those in favor? Opposed? And you recorded, it was off the dais? Counselor Beedenbender is back? Hi. All right. We've got two more items under new business. Let's see. Counselor, or actually, three bays. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2019-022?
Yes, Mr. President. 219-022, acceptance of a grant in the amount of $59,988 for the coastal pollution remediation grant program to design stormwater best management practice, BMPs, for the Three Bays areas, may be acted on.
I have a second. Go ahead, Dan.
Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. So the Department of Public Works has been awarded a grant from the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management in their Coastal Pollute and Remediation Program for fiscal year 2018, in support of our best management practice programs for stormwater management. This funding will continue to assist the Department of Public Works to assess, design, and complete permit applications for two or more top priority stormwater retrofit sites in the Three Bays watershed, which will help to improve water quality in the bays, restore habitat for shellfish, fish, and wildlife, and restore the area for designated human uses, including shellfishing, fishing, and swimming. This also, this grant also builds upon previous grants we've got from the EPA through the SNEP grant in the Three Bays area, as well as the previous coastal pollutant remediation grant last year in the same amount of money. So we're getting funds to address stormwater management in the Three Bays, and it's a great program. And when we can get money to do this, it helps us, particularly in the area of using innovative technologies, as the manager was talking about earlier, in order to see if we can save money down the road on our wastewater efforts.
Thank you, Dan. Counselor Raporessi?
Thank you, Dan. I have some concerns about the grant. I know the previous grant that we approved had sites specific with regards to the stormwater management. However, we're voting on something for money, but design hasn't been laid out. And the previous grant, monies were spent to design something that was taking away some public access on one of those sites, and subsequently, that site was removed from the program. I want to make sure going ahead that any further mitigation takes into account our limited access to the public for access to our waterways, and that we don't lose parking spaces, and we don't use the ability to launch boats in these sensitive areas. So I just want to keep that in mind going forward.
Okay. Any other counselors? Do I have a motion to move the question? I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2019-022. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you, Dan. Counselor Cullum, could you please read item 2019-023 and refer to a public hearing on September 20th, please?
Yes, I'd like to refer to a public hearing. Item 2019-023, supplemental appropriation order in the amount of $98,625 for the fiscal year 2019 Barnstable Police Department personnel operating budget as written. I'm referring it to 9/2018.
I have a second. All those in favor of referring item 2019-023 to a public hearing on September 20th, 2018? And that is unanimous. Vice President Crocker?
Yes, Mr. President. In consideration of tonight's voting, I would ask, since I was in the affirmative voting, to advance 2018-159 to the next annual meeting. I would ask that we reconsider it and withdraw it.
I have a second. I have a second. All right. So I have a second on a vote to reconsider the vote on item 2018-159, which we voted to continue to September 20th. So this reconsideration of that vote for the purposes of withdrawing it tonight. So any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Do I have a motion to move the question, then?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor of reconsidering the vote on item 2018-159? And that is unanimous. All right. So Vice President Crocker, could you make a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd move that we withdraw 2018-159 as drafted.
I have a second. All those in favor of withdrawing item 2018-159? And that is unanimous. That ends the orders of the day. Our next regular meeting is September 20th, 2018. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Have a good night, everyone.